All right, welcome everybody. Today is Tuesday, July sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. This is our workshop portion of our city council meeting and our topic that we will start off with is city council rules of procedure. And in as I was reviewing those again, I remembered that we have not been taking roll call during workshops. So I will go ahead and start with that. Councilman Member Van Orman. Councilmember Kurtz.
Present.
Councilmember Bald. Here. Mayor Pro Tim Targill.
Present.
Councilmember Spencer.
Present.
Councilmember Dan.
Happy to be here.
Doing real great with names at these meetings, aren't I? Member Kennedy.
Present.
All right, so we are all we are all present and accounted for. And we are going to start off with city administrator Mark McAvoy. And then I have, I will be sharing my screen. I have the word version of the document. I've already, I put a couple suggestions in there, but I this will allow us to redline as we go through the document.
Thank you, Mayor. So as we start this discussion, what you have in front of you, the several pages that is on the table in front of you is essentially the guts of the presentation that is on the screen. And so the way that the conversation is structured tonight is that we are going to talk about two specific proposals and then with any time remaining, we can have a more unstructured conversation for anything that any individual may want to go and make suggestions to revise in the rules of procedure. And so as you'll recall, the discussion that we had most recently at the city council retreat back on June twenty-sixth, we talked about both of these, what I'm calling proposals here. And so these aren't necessarily connected. They could individually be implemented or be implemented together. And so the way that the information flows on the packets in front of you and on the slides on the overhead is that we're going to talk about each proposal individually and and talk specifically about these sections of the rules of procedure that would need to be revised in order for that proposal to be implemented. And so as we go from one to two and then into the unstructured conversation, that's kind of how I've got this envisioned to flow. And so it's designed, this is a workshop, so it's designed to be a dialogue. It's not, there are no staff recommendations at this point. It's just a kind of a regurgitation of the information that we discussed at the retreat so that we can get some clarity and and direction as we move forward. So if we want to start with proposal number one, which is the revised meeting schedule. If Evan, if you'll go to the next slide, please, and then next. So the proposed amendments to the rules of procedure that would be required in order to implement this occur in section two, specifically in two dot one and two dot four, and then in section four, specifically in four dot one. Next slide, please. And so if you look at the revisions in section two dot one that would implement this revised meeting schedule and we and we talked about separating the workshop from the regular council meeting. And so in two dot one, which is specifically targeted at the regular council meeting, it defines it and gives the parameters there. The only, the only change, and again, this is coming out of the conversation at the retreat, so we can, we can alter this, obviously. The only change there would be a change to the beginning of the start time to six P M. We had talked about bringing that forward if there was no workshop on the regular meeting nights. So nothing else in section two dot one would change.
I got a question before we move on. Since, and this is for the council, so since a regular meetings people are currently starting at seven with an invite ten, if we go to six o'clock, regular meetings start, would you guys want to have the end time at nine with an extension, possible extension to ten?
That's what I was just thinking when I read it too.
Yeah, I'm getting, I'm getting nods.
I was just gonna say, especially since we are doing the workshops on the on the opposite Tuesday, it seems like it would make sense to then unless we really think we're gonna have that much to do on the regular council meeting nights to move it to six.
And and that really, you know, again, these aren't recommendations, but if we want to slide the whole schedule, that's perfectly fine.
Is there any objection to changing if we go to nine to change the invite at nine with an extension, possible extension to ten? Any objections to that?
I have no objection. I think that's a great idea.
Okay, great.
Okay, and so if you will flip now to the next page.
I think one asker.
Yes, sir.
Potential suggestion. I'm reading the sentence, one our extension up to ten. I'd like to consider the word majority replaced with by a unanimous vote of the council.
That's what we we used to have and then we went to majority and then came back.
That's fine. Whatever you guys want to do.
The the thought process from unanimous was a meeting, a meeting ends if one person says no, right? And there may be something pending that could potentially need to be resolved that evening. Whatever it may be, a time sensitive matter or something that needed to be completed. So if it's could be done at ten, ten, and you take a vote at nine fifty-nine and someone says, no, I'm not extending it, the meeting's over and you can't get to that item. So the idea was to have just a majority, so you would be able to do that. But you know, it's up to council what they want to do.
I I reflect on it as we're, you know, making extraordinary gestures in the procedures here to increase the amount of time total for the business of the council. And so I feel like we should be able to get done, but we need to. Unless there's an extraordinary gesture and in an extraordinary gesture, there would be a unanimous agreement.
Open to other, other comments. Everybody make sure your mics are on and you get close, please. Any other?
Majority vote.
Anybody else?
I'm all for the majority vote or for the unanimous vote, actually.
Anybody else?
Well, I I just look at it from the perspective of, okay, how much time are we going to have each month to do the business of the city? And if we're, right now, we take the the first and third and we go four hours, up to four hours, sometimes it's a little bit over. With this new schedule, we'd be doing basically every Tuesday at least two hours, which is eight hours, plus the possibility that we go to nine or ten on the first and third Tuesdays. So we're talking about in to council member Dunn's point, we're talking about increasing the amount of time here by three hours if my math is or two hours at least if my math is right. So I don't have a problem putting unanimous on there to try to force the council out to actually hurry up.
Councilmember Kurtz, your hand up.
Um, I think this might be a question more for Sean, but in an extraordinary event where we didn't have the unanimous, we would still have the option to by majority suspend the rules to adjust it in some way, wouldn't we? Or am I reading that wrong? We're thinking about that the wrong way.
You can suspend the rules, but if you take an action to end the meeting, you can't turn around and suspend the rules after you've already taken action. If that's what you're asking. But you could suspend the rules at any time if you wanted to do that, yes, and not take action on the time if that's what you're asking.
Thank you.
Okay, well, since we have some diverging opinions on that, can we make a note of that? And then when we get to the point of going through all final red lines, we can have further discussion and a vote on that.
Can I ask one more quick question, Sean? If if we were to say unanimous and as Annie says, it's an extraordinary circumstance where we don't get a unanimous vote, what happens to the pending action that we are on and then the action after? I assume the action afterwards can just be transferred to the next meeting, but the action that we're on, what happens to that?
So anything that would be not completed in the agenda could move to the next meeting.
Even if we've already begun discussion on it?
So so anything else, if you're, if you're on something, it would kind of depend upon where you are when you're making the motion. If you, if you're in the middle of something and there's a motion to extend the meeting, the meeting will end at ten. So if you get, you do it at nine forty and you get down to twenty minutes, great. If you do it at nine fifty-eight and you can't get down to two minutes, you're done with that and there's no further action because the meeting ends per your rules. Now, you could suspend the rules as Annie is talking about to say we want to suspend the rules as it relates to timing. You could do that. But again, I would presume that, you know, depending upon unanimous or majority vote, you'd have it right now to spend the rules of just majority. So that's what it would be.
Councilmember of all.
So when you say unanimous, does that mean, I mean, what if somebody's not here?
What if? No, it's just whoever's here.
Whoever's here, okay. Just wanted to clarify.
Councilmember Kennedy.
I could, I could see the benefit of of the discussion for either way. I'm in favor of unanimous. That's what we've done in the past. I could certainly see it if somebody at the end says, well, I don't vote, so therefore we're not going to move forward. But my history of many years sitting on that side of this dais and on this side, I don't recall ever a single time. Councilman Dunn, you've been around long, anybody else, I don't recall ever a time where council didn't extend it.
I think we had one, wait, yeah, it has happened.
Several.
Yeah. Yeah, actually. Back when, I think there was one, we had one when Susan Schuler was on council and we were going through budget and she voted no, so we were done for the night.
Odin did it before too.
Yeah. But the the good thing to remember is is that we usually know by, you know, twenty or twenty minutes or fifteen minutes till the top of the hour that we're going to go over. So we would have plenty of time to discuss, you know, either extending it or, okay, we're going to make motions to move things to the next meeting. That fair, Sean?
I'm sorry, I'm extending it.
So we usually know well in advance that we're probably going to go over. And there's been cases where we extend and then we finish in time, but but a lot of times it's a, it's a just in case. And so I would say, you know, if we know, if we know that, you know, we're probably going to go over, somebody makes that motion at twenty till or quarter till, that gives also gives us time to move things to, you know, move things to the next meeting as well.
And I know, yes, that's, that's correct. I I think the issue too in the past was there are seven council members and if there was business that needed to be completed, one member could change and over six other members of the council to do action.
So it gives power to one person.
Correct. So the the idea was, well, wait a minute, if six of us want to continue having discussion and one says no, then one allows the meeting to end. So that was the other part of it as well.
Yeah. Councilmember Kennedy.
Thank you, Mayor. My recommendation would be because we're discussing this tonight and I'm making a decision at this point is to redline that particular one will give us some time when it does come back for a vote for all of us to think of the ramifications both directions.
Well, that's the direction I was going. All right, go ahead, Mark, next.
Okay, if we, Evan, if you go to the next slide and everyone flips to the sheet that is section two dot four, which specifically talks about the workshops. You can see here that the changes that would be required to facilitate that are in front of you. And so it would read the council shall hold workshops on the, I'm sorry, the second and fourth Tuesdays of each month beginning at six P M and ending by eight P M. The council may cancel workshops as necessary and or hold special workshops outside of the second and fourth Tuesdays of each month. And then the rest of it is is what it currently says now, which is to define the purpose of the workshop. There's a continuation on the next page, which also has a strike through. And that is just to adjust the definition to push future action to a regular council meeting, not in the workshop. And so that's, those are the changes that would be required in section two dot four. And so now open for discussion.
Go ahead, Councilmember Pro Tim.
Two, two questions, Mark. One, do we run the risk of if we're saying essentially that we can't take action in one of those meetings, do we run the risk of elongating then the regular meetings? Because then we have the conversation essentially all over again. That's my first question. My second question is the last line of two point four that's on here, attendance is strongly encouraged. I'm wondering what our requirements are. I don't know if we have any other than the the yeah, the on the regular meetings, other than that the council could not excuse you. I mean, my concern is that if we say, yeah, we're, we're strongly encouraging you to attend that we get some people who just decide, hey, I'm not going to attend on the off, on the off chance or on the off meetings and I'm just, I'm just going to attend the regular council meetings. Any thoughts about those?
I agree.
So that certainly is is open for the the council's deliberation on whether attendance should be mandatory or or strongly encouraged with respect to the action. I I think my, and I'll ask Sean to contribute here, the 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 purpose of the workshop would be to prepare you for potential future action. And so although I don't think it's the staff's desire or intention to prevent action from being taken, what would that look, the the intent would not be to have action happening during a workshop week?
Not on the, on the agenda, you mean? I mean, let's say, you know, we all agreed to something on a workshop week and it's, everybody is in in agreement on, you know, whatever issue. Are are you saying you could go ahead and vote on that? It just wouldn't necessarily be the intention to vote on it?
Well, I think, what is the definition of action? Because action in in this context is, so how to do a public meeting? So let's use a simple example. Let's say you're talking about bus trips. And you're trying to decide where those bus trips goes and there's three different options and the council decides we like option A. You can take action, say, we like option A and knowing that those bus trips may be another party that agreement is going to come back to say this is option A and you'll have that in another meeting. I think what Mark's getting at is you're not precluded. It's a, it's a public notice meeting. And if people want to come and find are aware of it, if it's on the agenda, you can, you can take particular action. You'd have to be careful to the extent that there was something else that you were doing that may not necessarily be on the agenda, whatever that may be, given the circumstances. But generally speaking, if you're going to be talking about particular items at a workshop that are on the agenda and you want to take action relative to that, it's a notice meeting and you'd be able to do that.
Because I, Annie, Councilmember Kurtz, I'll get you just a second. Because, you know, I can see things like that happening, right? We can give, the council can, you know, I think, you know, that's a good opportunity to give direction to staff. You know, we're talking about an upcoming resolution or something and, okay, well, we want to see X, Y, or Z. I, those aren't, because because you still eventually have to vote on the final product.
Yeah. So what we're trying to convey here, and maybe this will help in in that context, is not putting a, an item for which you have to vote for something to happen.
Right, yeah, a final action.
Yes.
Some sorts of, uh, Councilmember Kurtz, your hand's up.
My question was similar to Mayor Pro Tim's regarding the attendance and whether that's required or not for the workshop. And what I want to avoid is people not going to those regularly or consistently and then also coming unprepared. And the staff having to rehash or re-present or give that information. So I was wondering if there's some requirement that we watch that if we're not able to attend or some prepared, some language that makes it so that we we aren't wasting our time by redoing a workshop for somebody who doesn't attend.
Right. Great. Councilmember Kennedy.
Thank you, Mayor. One question that I concern, it says council shall hold workshops versus May. Can I ask why shall versus may? What's your recommendation? Why?
Well, if because we're moving the workshop to the second and fourth Tuesdays, it would not be, it would be stricken from the regular meeting agenda. And so the the shall only means that the workshops will will be held. The other piece of the revised two dash four, two dot four would allow council to adjust the schedule as necessary. If there wasn't anything to bring for a workshop discussion, there wouldn't be no reason to assemble and then adjourn.
So plan for it and then it may, if there's nothing of significance for that, then we could cancel.
I guess, I guess my concern is confusion is, are we creating more work where we don't need? Are we creating where we say shall, that means we're gonna, the public's gonna look at this, we're gonna be meeting for every week, four times a month. And then if we decide not to have a meeting, a workshop on any given Tuesday, then we can say we're not going to do that. We have that now. Correct me if I'm wrong, but we have that now where we schedule our workshops at six o'clock, but we don't always have the workshops. They might be canceled because we have nothing there, so we, it doesn't show up, we're gonna have a workshop and then we automatically go into our seven o'clock meeting. I just wonder if we're just creating more work for ourselves and not so much ourselves, staff.
I don't, I don't believe it's creating more work for staff. I I think it's setting an expectation that there there will be workshops and the part of this goes to the, to to address your point, part of it goes to the ease of one action or the other. Is it easier to have something on a schedule and then cancel it? Or decide, oh, we, we actually need this and then notice it and go through that process? And from staff's perspective, the first one of those is far less burdensome, meaning they're scheduled and if they're unnecessary, they're just canceled.
The other concern that I have is that if we now suddenly amazingly enough are looking at meeting four times every single week, four times.
Come on. Yeah, not every week. Please don't say every week.
It almost seems like, it almost seems like every week. I'll hold my comment. Thank you.
One thing with regard to shall usage, you'll need to have a formal cancellation notice put out by having shall as opposed to may. So that'll, the the meeting will need to be canceled officially and formally through notice if that's the case.
That's practice anyway.
Right.
Let me go to Councilmember Ball first and back to Mayor Pro Tim.
So here's a thought, you know, if four times a month seems too much, what about having the workshop on the second Tuesday of the month from six to nine?
Well, I I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mark, but I think the the reason for having two shorter ones because things come up in those two weeks.
Oh, okay, I see your point. Yeah, okay.
See, it's easy, going to be easier to address things real time.
Yeah, yeah.
If we have two short ones.
And to, if you flip to, I don't know what page it's on, but the calendar, that may help drive the point home. Because in in this month in particular, so the workshop would have been last week. There would have been five weeks, or I'm sorry, four weeks in between the workshop and the next meeting. And so that's, that's a long time, even even if you have heard the reasons for whatever action is being discussed there, that's a long time between hearing it and then being asked to vote on it. And so with the second and fourth, you get a more regular cadence.
Right, right.
But like we just discussed, if we get to a a place where there isn't anything to be workshopped.
Right.
We would just cancel the workshop.
Okay, I see. Thank you. Mayor Pro Tim, you were up next and then back to Councilmember Kennedy.
I just, I just wanted to say, I think there's a value not only for the staff, but perhaps more importantly for the community in saying it's every week at six o'clock. And not, you know, one week it's six o'clock and then the next week it's maybe, and then the next week it's six o'clock and then the next week it's seven o'clock and or whatever. I I just think that for the, for insistency sake, that the community knows, that the staff knows, every Tuesday at six o'clock, the council's going to be. Now, there may be in a, an occasional time in which we don't have anything to discuss or we don't have a workshop to go over and then we notice it and we don't have a meeting that week. But for the sake of the calendar, I think it's important to just say consistently every week at six o'clock.
Unless there's a fifth Tuesday.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But that only happens two times a year, so.
Is it only two times?
Is it four?
It seems like more than that. It doesn't matter.
Oh, yeah, four next year, all right. All right, they'll be in asterisks, you know?
Councilmember Kennedy.
This month is one.
Yeah.
Oh, thank you, Mayor.
Next year.
Well, presently, the council meets twice a month and we have works, the option to have workshops at six o'clock of each of those. There are many times we don't have a workshop at six o'clock. So if that's the case, it means that we don't have enough information that we need to discuss to have a workshop. So we just don't have it. My concern, if we go down to say that we're going to be meeting every week almost, that we're going to be looking for, either staff or council would be looking for to bring something up to have a workshop. Because if, my concern is if we have gone for years successfully of having two meetings a month and having workshops of which every time we didn't have a workshop and we're taking care of the citizens' business. I could understand if we have workshops every single time and there's never been canceled. I just don't see the need to suddenly try to invent more things for us to get together on.
No, I don't think it's in, this is my personal experience, I don't think it's inventing more things, it's being more time, time efficient on those workshops, everybody's prepared, because we have found ourselves running up against the the time clock many times. You know, because workshops have gone longer, yeah, and we're working on the presentation timeframe. But I think, and I believe the the staff has indicated as well that this is more efficient on their side as well.
Well, the, and to council member or the mayor Pro Tim's point earlier, predictability becomes the biggest pro, right? Where you've got this ability to schedule things and and be able to give counsel touches in advance of asking counsel to consider things and vote yea or nay. And so that that becomes, I think, the biggest pro of this. You're you're absolutely right, Councilmember Kennedy, that I, no one, including staff, wants to create work. And that's certainly not what we're trying to do here. I think what we're trying to do is to infuse predictability into the process and make sure that each item is given the proper amount of time so that council can consider it appropriately, because there have been times, and we talked about this during the retreat, there have been times, sometimes it's poor planning on our part, but other times it's by necessity where we bring something in a workshop and you have, you listen to the content delivered in the workshop and then thirty minutes later, we're asking you to vote on it. And some of those things may be okay, but there may be other times where you want to consider more than that and weigh options and all of that. And this would allow you to do that.
Yeah, and that's our, Mark's and my goal going forward is to be, you know, to at least have the two touches. If something of great importance is coming that we're going to ask everybody to vote on, that we have a workshop first and then a subsequent at a different meeting have the action. I think I had Councilmember Kurtz up next. You're on mute. No, you're still on mute.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, my spacebar must not be working. So this is one of the things that I've been asking about a little bit over the last couple of years is having more frequent meetings. Because I think that to Mark's point at the retreat, we have enough business as we're growing, that we have enough topics that we're just going to need to take the time to talk about those things. And what I heard Mark say also previously was that having the shorter, more frequent meetings would be helpful for staff so that they and we are not staying until eleven o'clock at night because we have done that quite a bit. I mean, at least until ten. But I think the other piece of it for me was being able to get the information in the workshop, be able to make sure that we're asking staff for what information we need between now and the meeting when we do need to make a decision to have that information versus saying, oh, we don't need all this information and staff is really hoping that we can make a decision that night, but we don't feel like we have enough decision based on the workshop. So I I support the idea of the extra meetings and I hope that it does shorten the meetings for us in all of the meetings, but then also for staff too, so they're not there until, you know, ten or eleven o'clock at night.
Councilmember Van Orman.
This basically brings it up to the three touch rule, which makes perfect sense. We're getting done a little bit earlier and we're keeping it fresh in our minds. I do see the council may instead of shall, but wording is everything. So in considering we're coming up with a comp plan, we're going to be really busy and I know that that's what's on the, for most of your minds.
Well, and then then we've got the library master plan and the town square master plan and the facilities master plan. So, yeah, we all are going to be very busy. Councilmember Dunn.
I think the draft two point four looks great. I support the additional meeting and specifically the time points that are described. I I support the word shall recognizing that it can be canceled as it's needed, so. That's my thought.
Well, if there's no objections, we'll move on.
One more, oh, yeah, just one quick note here. One, I think it's important to note that in basically a quarter of the year, those workshop sessions are going to be taken up by the budget. So I mean, we're talking October through, well, maybe not the end of December, obviously, but through, yeah, through at least a couple of months, if not more than that, we're going to be doing budgets on those workshop days. And then the other thing that I would hope we could just put an asterisk on and and have further discussion about is whether attendance should be put an asterix on and, and have further discussion about is whether attendance should be mandatory uh, versus strongly encouraged. I would hate to have a situation where in the future, you know, only three or four or five members are attending the workshop discussions, and then to, I think, council member Kennedy's point, um, or maybe it was council member Kurtz's point, then the next week they come back and they want a briefing on what we just discussed at the workshop session last week. So, thank you.
Yeah, just a quick question, because it, it looks like further on here in the packet, um, we would be eliminating workshop discussions from the regular meeting then, is that correct?
So, once we get to section four, yeah, it would strike that section out.
So, I, I mean, we wouldn't really have an opportunity in a regular meeting. I mean, council members would have to come prepared.
Yeah, exactly. Great. Yes, go ahead, Sean.
So, um, I'm trying to look it up right now, as far as the definition. Right now, the statute provides, it says three consecutive regular meetings is where a council member can be removed. Um, now, right now, that's why you see it in the rules right now, where it says regular council meeting as opposed to other meetings, and it's consistent with the state statute. So, um, the way I would interpret it right now, as I'm looking it up, would be that it would just be the regular meeting, it wouldn't be a workshop. So you'd have to miss three consecutive regular meetings as opposed to a regular meeting, a workshop, and a regular meeting for you to be removed.
And those are all, those are an excuse too. So I don't.
Correct.
At least since I've been on, I, we haven't had anything close. I think maybe with Brian years ago, maybe you were. I'm not sure. Um, but that's a long time ago.
Yeah, so in order.
Unexcused.
Yeah.
So in order to, to be in compliance with that statute, if we were going to require attendance, we'd have to call the workshop session a regular meeting as well?
Correct.
Interesting. I'd be interested to see, um, Spokane Valley, I know on their off, off weeks, not off anymore. They have workshops as well. I'd be interested to see how they have their, theirs boarded. You can take a look at that. Okay. All right, if there's no more, we'll go on to four point one.
So four point one really is just removing the agenda item uh, from the regular meeting's agenda, and, and that really is just to kind of prevent the workshop creep, right, back into the uh, regular meeting. And so that, that's purely council's decision whether to strike or leave. But that's the reason why you see it proposed here as being stricken.
But that still would leave open if something would come up that we would need some workshop time, the council could suspend the rules and add
Oh, sure.
Add a workshop back to the agenda. This just, like you said, it, it takes it out, so it's not a avail, a regularly available option.
Yeah, it's just, it would just be agenda. The council could amend the agenda at the beginning of a meeting and add a workshop.
Yeah.
Council member Kurtz, I see your hand.
Would we then add this definition for workshop discussions in its, in its own right, so people know what the in the rules of procedure, what the focus is, like it says here for the workshops, or was that already done? Because I just don't have the handout.
So it's not in the handout, but if you look in the actual rules, rules of procedure and uh, probably either section two point two or two point three, um, you'll see that um, in there, or I'm sorry, in, in, in section two point four, it's, it's in there.
The perp- it says, uh, the purpose of a workshop is to provide the council with information surrounding impending and or currency business. And then there's more after that. Okay. All right, and then you've got the calendar there with some.
Yeah, the calendar is just illustrative of what twenty twenty five would look like under this uh, setup, where you would see there that your fifth Tuesday month would be April, July, September, and December, and there would be one month, November, where you had a holiday that falls on the second Tuesday. And so either you would just say that's a holiday, we're not having the workshop, or based on the changes uh, that you saw on section two dot four, you could reschedule that. Um, and.
Oh, that's Veterans Day, right?
Right.
Okay, got it. Uh, Mayor Pro Tim.
I think there's a um, a likely, obviously, twenty twenty five is different because of Veterans Day, but um, twenty twenty six and, and so on. It may be um, a situation where we decide we want to move the regular meeting to the following Tuesday because of something like election.
Sure.
Night. Um, so I guess that brings up my second question, and that is I guess to Sean, if we were to adopt this schedule and have the shall language, then do we have to take two actions, one to cancel the workshop meeting, and then two to reschedule the regular meeting for that following week?
Yes.
Okay.
I thought somewhere in here we had that if eh, there we go, regular can, under two point one, regular council meetings, um, let me get back here. Um, when the council meeting falls on a holiday or an election day, council may determine an alternate day, so election days are all, are counted as a holiday. So thanks for bringing that up. Okay. All right, is there any other input? Because we do have a little bit of time. I wouldn't mind going through a couple of the other housekeeping. Oh, I, council member Kurtz, I see your hand back up.
Yeah, I had a question about the cancellations, and then if we're gonna cancel the workshop, um, do we need to delineate by when we would do that so people can make plans?
So.
What does the statute require, if anything?
Cancel.
So, well, I mean, obviously, the better notice, I don't think there, there's not a specific that I can think of right now off the top of my head that requires that you would um, have to say you'd have to do it within a particular period of time. There's a, to call a meeting is different, like a special meeting is twenty-four hour notice, but to cancel a meeting, you could have emergency for that matter. So the, the, I think the reasoning behind it is circumstances could arise that would result in a need to cancel a meeting, and you don't want to say, well, I've got to have forty-eight hours notice, and then an emergency happens and there's no way you can have the meeting anyway. So, um, to answer your question, Annie, if, if the meeting was gonna be on Tuesday and there was gonna be a cancellation, um, I think the intent would be that Kelsey can get the notice out at no later, and I'm sure the sooner the better is the intent, but certainly want to do it before the end of business on Monday before the Tuesday meeting, but to the extent that something happened on Tuesday, you could do that.
That's something we can also, uh, Mark, talk to uh, directors tomorrow during our meeting. Um, because I would think, because we, we meet every Tuesday for an agenda review, and obviously now it'll be, you know, work, include workshop review, and I would think that we would know by Thursday, early Friday, whether or not there was something that that we wouldn't have anything for a workshop.
Yeah, and, and absolutely, uh, and I would say even beyond that, the part of the benefit that I see coming from this is that we're now planning weeks out, right? So we would have some indication weeks out that there may be a need to cancel. So I don't ever foresee being, you know, springing that um, more than we don't think this one is required, so we'll issue a cancellation.
The, the other thing to keep in mind too is I would caution about having a hard, fast rule because situations change from week to week. Um, you could have several council members that are out of town for business, other ones on vacation, and someone comes uphill, and now you have three people. Do you really want to have that workshop if you have four council members that are not going to be able to participate in that workshop? So if you don't realize that until Monday morning before Tuesday, um, and you need to move forward with the meeting, you're probably gonna have to have another meeting to talk about it, because four council members didn't necessarily hear the information. So I'm, I, I would recommend not necessarily have a hard rule as it relates to that particular circumstance, and let the, the, the facts of a situation arise and then make the determination.
Annie, is your hand still up, or you didn't, or?
No, I'm sorry, I have another question based.
Okay, no, go ahead.
Just saying, um, so then do we need to be thinking about some sort of way to tell staff if we're gonna be there or not, based on, you know, we talked earlier about making sure people were there, just so that, again, we're not running into a situation where only three people are gonna be there, um, and it's, you know, not a good use of everybody's time. So I don't know that we need an answer to that tonight, but just something to be thinking about, about how how to make the meetings effective, how do we get the, the attendance that we think we need, so that it's not a waste of time for, for staff?
Agreed. Well, I think we'll, we'll learn a lot as this gets kicked off. All right. Say if nobody else has anything else on these items, I wouldn't mind sharing my screen, go through a couple of the housekeeping things. And then I, I think our attention would be at the next regular meeting to bring back uh, we'll get every red line version before the next meeting. Sean has a chance to review it and possi- would it be possible to have the resolution ready for the next regular meeting, Mark, you think?
Oh, yes, absolutely. We can, we can do that.
Okay, um, council member Kennedy.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. I for one, I'm, I'm always encouraged that we're gonna look at ordinance resolutions, or they need to be updated, changed, even looking at them to determine that they're okay as we move forward on it. I think there's some pros and cons, what we're looking at here. On it, I think there are more cons than there are pros. On it, and why I say that is that this came up in our retreat, and now what I hear is that we're gonna have this in our next meeting to vote on this. My question has, would be the same as I brought up in our retreat. Are, can we be more efficient in our regular meetings? Can we get away from if we, if we start at seven and we need to be done by ten, three hours? Can we cut down for an hour and fifteen minutes or an hour time to have somebody come in and give a presentation and go on and on and on? And therefore, what happens when we allow that, we're in a big rush to get our city work done. So I think we, what I would like to see us do to say what I asked for in the retreat, is that let's look at our meetings over a period of the last year or two. How many times did we go beyond ten o'clock? On it, where we had these extensions. Also, how many times do we don't have the six o'clock meeting? Because I believe if we can be more attendant on our regular meetings and get city business done, I don't see the advantage that we're suddenly have to have more meetings throughout the month. Because in doing so, what it will do is it's going to increase the cost to the city or our city employees, because comp time, things of the sort here, it will increase the, more than likely, the fees that are paid to council members, because we have a committee that looks at what do the council members earn? And that's based on what? The time that we spend doing the job. So now, if we're going to almost double that, what we're doing is adding an expense on to the citizens of saying that, well, maybe we should look to see if we can be more conscientious on the time that we have and not burden you with additional fees. So my concern is moving forward is that I would like to have these same questions answered before we suddenly have it on the agenda to vote on something. Thank you.
No, I think we've shared before that the staff prefer, has expressed that they prefer and think it's more efficient to do the separate workshops. It would, it would look, it would have them here not as late. It would be more um, more manageable in that, you know, they may not, every one of the, the staff may not have to be at every meeting like they are now, they'll get home earlier, which means they, they're not as, as tired and to coming into work the next day. Um, so I guess, I, I guess my question to everybody is, is there anybody opposed with moving ahead with what we've discussed tonight? Besides council member Kennedy.
Oh, excuse me.
Yes.
Don't misunderstand me. I, I'm not saying not to move ahead of this. I'm saying before moving ahead is we have some questions answered. And the questions are, are we being efficient with the time that we do have? You know, please don't look at this as I'm against this. I'm in favor of this if it, it becomes productive for the council and the citizens. But if it's just a matter of having additional meetings because we're, we're not, we're not good schedulers of our time, then shame on us to put that burden on our citizens and also our staff.
Yeah, I think I've got council member Kurtz first. I'm gonna stop sharing, because we're not gonna get to that. Um, council member Kurtz, then I think council member Ball, then Cargill and Spencer. Go ahead, Annie.
Wow, it just left my brain. Um, I think my only hesitation with coming back with a red line, where something that we're gonna vote on, is I would like to have just one more workshop to go through things again, because I think we're focused on um, some of the recommendations from staff, and it sounds like some housekeeping that you have, Mayor. Um, but I think the council hasn't had a chance to go through anything that we would like to look at after our reading it and thinking about it. So I would appreciate just one more workshop so that we have the ability to go through those topics and perhaps provide you with red lines that could be consolidated in some way, so it can be more efficient.
Okay, and then can we get council member Ball?
Well, as far as, um, you know, the, the late meetings, um, I have talked to a couple of staff members who would prefer not to go that late because they're exhausted. They get here early, then they have to leave late. Um, and also there are some of us who are not, we do work still, and we have to go to work the next day too. So it's a drag on me, eh, you know, also to have to be here till eleven o'clock and, you know, get up early. And as far as being more efficient in the meetings, I know you, my camp, uh, council member Kennedy don't like some of the lengthy presentations by others, but personally, I find those very informative, because these are people that are experts in their fields, and I want to know what they have to say. So yes, if they go on, you know, for half hour, that's unreasonable, but I want the information. So I'm not um, I, I, I'm not in favor a- at any time of, you know, cutting them off, because it's just, it's information we need. So, thank you.
Thank you. Um, Mayor Pro Tim.
Uh, two things. One, Mark, I, I think I brought this up at our, our retreat, but I just want to confirm. The contract that we have with Executec, does, how is that impacted by this potential change? Are we gonna have to make, extend the hours? Because they'd be here every week, or?
So it's, it's not a contract capacity issue. We have plenty of capacity in the contract. It would be an exercise of adjusting um, schedules so that we were not uh, automatically assuming that there was gonna be X amount of overtime every week. So there would be a balancing that would occur. And then on the other side of that, um, it's possible that we have uh, some opportunities for some other staff members to fill in. Um, so you have a net zero impact financially, but that would be the goal, is to not uh, to, to the question that was raised earlier, not just automatically assume that we're gonna spend double the amount of, of staff time in salary or flex time or any other combination of wage or benefit.
Okay. And then, uh, the second thing is, I was just d- d- doing a quick math uh, lesson here. So basically, what we're doing right now is theoretically, it's from six to ten, every, every, the first and second Tues- or first and third Tuesday, which totals ninety-two hours per year. That's if we get out at ten. If we were to go to a um, a three hour on the, so six to nine on the main meeting day, and then potentially two hours on the workshop session, we'd be at a hundred and twenty hours a year. If we were to keep it at six to ten, um, and then two hours on the workshop sessions, we'd be looking at a hundred and forty-four hours a year. So now, not every week is gonna be exactly the same, and some may be longer and some may be shorter, but I think to council member Kennedy's point, there is uh, something to consider, the fact that we'd be talking about, you know, ten to twenty to thirty more hours uh, per year uh, that not only this council would have to um, schedule for, but potentially um, potentially staff would as well.
Yeah, there's, there's no way to, you, you're, you're correct, and, and the potential for that to um, be impactful is there, no question about it. The, the alternative um, that I would offer is that there have been many times when we've been in situations like now, where we're bumping up against the seven o'clock, and we either don't cover material, or we in the last five minutes, we, we, we throw out a bunch of stuff um, and don't really have adequate opportunity for council to ask questions, and there to be a, a back and forth where you get the true sense of what it is that's being presented. And so um, that, that would be assisted, we, we, that would be alleviated.
Yeah.
Um, and so there, there's, there's certainly going to be a, a cost benefit. Um, but like I've said before, um, we, we believe on the net that the benefits outweigh the costs.
Okay, and I have not forgotten you, council member. Respect to your next.
Um,
uh, well, and just uh, to add to that, we don't meet at six PM every single
Right.
regular meeting. So, um, on, on the reverse, what I'm hearing from Mark and and uh, what the staff are requesting is the ability on the week prior to us taking action on any item, we have the ability to discuss that, and we have a week to digest that. Whereas the way we're currently doing it, yes, we can add a special meeting on a, on an off Tuesday, but this would give us, you know, cur- currently, sometimes we're having to take action on information we just got. Um, so there's, there's pluses and minuses to both of these, and, and I don't think any of us want to have to come every week, but I think it's something to definitely consider.
Right, um, uh, Councilor Dunn, do you have your hand up?
No, I don't.
Okay, I thought I saw it. Okay. What?
I had one.
Okay. Okay.
One question is, is the intent to have this in play this year?
I think so.
That would, that would be a question I would pose to the council. Because if you pass a resolution, it'll be in play. So that's why I'm asking that question, right?
We can have it effective though, like the first of the year.
If, yes, if you want to make it effective. This, the second thing is to, and I can do this part, address the remote attendance section, since it's back from twenty-one and we were,
Yeah.
back when we did it in twenty-one, it was still in dealing with COVID and that aspect of it now. With Zoom and Microsoft Teams and all that, it's much different attendance process than what we have right now. So if you want, I can go through that section and make it a little simpler.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, it is six fifty-one. You will see, we'll still work on some red lines to get out to you guys. We'll add another workshop on this for the next meeting. And then if we can come to some conclusions during that meeting, then we'll have the ordinance and well, obviously, part of that workshop, Councilmember Kennedy, we can discuss some of the things you asked about. Okay?
Quick question?
Yes.
Uh, or the ordinance review part, the standing committee?
Yeah.
Are we, uh, you know, talk about that at the seven o'clock or is it your intention to bring that back with the others?
Well, it, we could amend the agenda to add a workshop item at the seven o'clock to go through this if you choose to do that, because this, and depending on the Q and A, this is a ten minute conversation, at least on the presentation. So if you want to do that tonight, we can absolutely do that.
Thank you.
All right.
We're, we're prepared to talk about it.
Gotcha.
All right, and six fifty, oh, go ahead.
I just want to make a comment. If we do put this into play, I prefer it to be this year. Let's go. Yeah.
Well, I know a lot of people already have summer plans scheduled, so maybe it's in the fall, but that's again, it's a whole other discussion. We can, we can have. All right, six fifty-two, we will adjourn until we, until we have our regular meeting at seven A P M. Hey, good evening, everybody. Welcome to our city council meeting. Today is Tuesday, July sixteenth, twenty twenty-four. We are meeting here in City Hall. And we also have the remote option that is listed. Obviously, if you're remote, you already found that. So we're going to go ahead and start tonight with the invocation given by Mayor Pro Tim Cargill, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join me.
Our heavenly Father, we're grateful for the opportunity to come together this evening as a community to take care of the community's business and also meet and associate with each other. We ask for your blessing over this meeting that we can work together on the top issues that are impacting our city and we can also experience peace and tranquility in Jesus' name.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And go ahead and call the meeting to order. We will start off with our roll call. Councilman, Member Van Ormen, he's here. Councilmember Kurtz, who is joining remotely. We have Councilmember Ball here. Mayor Pro Tim Cargill.
Present.
Councilmember Spencer.
Here.
Councilmember Dunn.
Happy to be here.
And Councilmember Kennedy.
Present.
All right, all present and accounted for. We will move on to agenda approval and I will defer to Mayor Pro Tim.
Mayor, while one change I'd like to propose to the agenda is to add a nine B, the ordinance review committee discussion.
Do we have a second to that motion? We have a motion and a second to add nine B workshop on ordinance review committee? Do we have any discussion, any comments? All right, not hearing any. All in favor of adding nine B, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? My motion passes seven zero.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Hold on real quick before,
Yeah.
are there any other requested amendments?
Number it is with the, the, the check register. I need to move that into the regular.
So are you making a mo, are you making a motion to move ten B?
Yes.
To eleven C?
Yes.
Okay, so the motion is on the floor to move ten, ten B to eleven C. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Dunn. Any questions? All right, not hearing any. All those in favor of moving general business B to eleven C, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Right, motion passes seven zero. Are there other, any other requested amendments before we move on?
All right, Mayor, I will now make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
We have a second.
Second.
We have a second by Councilmember Spencer. All those in favor of approving the agenda as amended, that's hard to say. Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes seven zero. We have an agenda. All right, next up is citizen comments. So for you frequent flyers, if you're here in the room and you have a comment, there are yellow half sheets of paper next to the door over there. If you can please fill those in and get them to Kyle over here at the end of the table. If there's anybody online, please send a note to our meeting host and he will let me know. Guidelines are there's a three minute limit. Please keep comments respectful. If there's any disruption of the meeting, we, we do reserve the right to, to ask you to leave and I think that's it. So do we have any comments internal here in the chambers? Nothing? Nobody online? Does not look like it. Okay, just remember that there will be another opportunity for general citizen comments at the end of the meeting. Next up, we do not have any announcements, proclamations or special presentations, so we're up to number eight, reports and inquiries. And we'll move to city council reports and inquiries. Does we have anybody who'd like to speak? Councilmember Ball?
Okay, I have a couple of things. I'll start with the, first with, on the eighth of July, I finally got a tour of scraps. I had been trying to get this done for some time, but it was difficult to coordinate schedules. I met with Jesse Ferrari, the executive director, and Nick Hobbs Doyle Shelter Operations Manager. I think they were both here when they gave their presentation. Jess joins scraps in October of twenty-two with Nick joining in December of twenty-two. The previous director had resigned stating burnout. The rest of the staff followed suit. As a side note, this was not Nancy Hill's mess at all. Both Jess and Nick are military veterans with diverse backgrounds and of course, they are animal lovers. Stats, they have eighty kennels and can house ninety dogs at a time. Thirty to fifty cats go in and out each week. A hundred and ninety cats can be housed. There was no medical facility before this administration. Now they have a vet on staff, an O R and an X-ray machine that didn't cost taxpayers a dime because it was donated. So I mean, how can you send a pet to a new home without knowing what its health condition is? They are spayed or neutered before they're ready for adoption. Fifteen to thirty percent of the intake and outflow are reclaimed. In other words, your pet gets out of the yard or whatever and is taken to the shelter, put on the website, the owner comes to get the pet. One man who owned twenty dogs with no kennel license, i.e. he was a hoarder, was busted and twenty dogs were removed. One nice person took four of them in to foster, but scraps took sixteen. Of these dogs, Hagar was the one dog, the dogs, was one of the dogs removed from the hoarder. He had been there before for bad behavior, then the hoarder took him in. I saw, oh, I'm sorry, Hagrad, not Higar. I saw Hagrad. He's huge. He's mean. And I've, I've never seen anything like it. He was in what they call the D pod, meaning they had issues. And it's, it's very questionable that this dog can be socialized again. He's just had a terrible life. Scraps is a member of the Association of All Shelter, of Shelter Veterinarians and the, and the Shelter Play Group Alliance, among others. All the animals are vetted before they may enter a play area with other animals for safety reasons. Funds are allocated to train on assessing behavior and modifying the same. They do not euthanize for space, which has been, you know, last year, a very hot topic. They showed me, and this is where it got real, they showed me before and after photos of what they inherited. They were horrific. The mezzanine, which is now where they neatly store the dog and cat food, was infested with rodents. At least twenty mice were killed daily. Just this past May, three thousand six hundred and sixty pounds of rusted material was removed. Over two tons of garbage and filth were removed by just these two guys. They are cleaned out now. Rooms that once held crates stacked with kittens or rabbits and were filthy are now offices. They had to wear hazmat gear to clean out some of the rooms. A freezer had a chest-high pile of dead animals in it with the ones on the bottom covered in maggots. The photos were appalling. So why this group that calls themselves Underground Rainbow is targeting them is questionable at best. Both Jess and Nick have received death threats from this group daily. The group's goal is to target them and I can't understand why. What I saw was a clean facility with medical services, clean cages, a bathing and grooming area. They check all incoming pets for ticks and fleas and whatever else. I'm really comfortable after this tour with scraps. They currently need one more animal protection officer and really need a development director, P R person. If you know anybody looking for a job in that field. I urge you all to take the tour. Only three public officials, and that includes me, have done this. They're doing good work and don't deserve the vitriol they've received. And they also need donations of dog food. So I just really, really felt that I had to share this because I just don't understand why they were given such a hard time. So anyway, and the other little thing, Saturday at the farmer's market, it was very slow. I can only assume because of the heat, right? Is that kind of what you think too? He was before me. But a lady came through with a background in talent management in art and music and was interested in the Parks and Arts Commission. So I referred her to Jen. Jen's been in contact and yay. So anyway, that was kind of fun.
All right, thanks for the report on scraps. We've always, personally, I've always had a good relationship with them, so glad to hear it. All right, any other city council members? Councilmember Dunn?
Um, yeah, S T A Spokane Transit continues to advance Connect twenty thirty-five, their ten-year strategic plan and is now emerging with some, I'd say prioritization to the objectives at hand. I've studied carefully what transit-oriented development and specifically how within the greater transit benefit district jurisdictions are setting development and land codes to support better use of transit. And have been able to arrange for a, a one-day meeting, a short meeting with staff of Liberty Lake to try and look at best practices in transit-oriented development as, as it's emerged around the county as well as some of our current and future development. I'd say codes and allowances. Comp plays well into our upcoming efforts of the comprehensive plan overhaul. So the date for that is the first of August. Again, just a small staff meeting to gather S T A's planning along with our city planning. That's what it.
All right, thank you very much. All right, anybody else? Councilmember Kennedy?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, I'd like to make a comment in regards to the library with the, tomorrow night is going to be the soiree that the Friends of Library put on each year.
And it's sold out?
And it's sold out. That's the thing I wanted to be able to say is that once again, it's about a hundred and fifty tickets, the most we can get in there. And it's sold out every single year, even though we probably get a few people that come in at the last minute that we try to work in. It's a very successful event. A hundred percent of the proceeds of that go directly to the benefit of the library to fund items that the city does not put funds towards. So it's a great organization. It's a group of individuals that spend a lot of time and effort to do this, like all of our organizations that we have in the town, such as the Kiwanis and Alliance and things like that sort there. So it's very successful, the group.
All right, any other council reports? Councilmember Van Ormen?
And to follow up with Lions, I was able to do a podcast with David Gainer, so looking forward to hearing how it turned out with the podcast with David Gainer for Lions Club. And we'll be talking about that a little bit later on in the agenda.
Right, great preview. Thank you. All right, anybody else? Council comment, of council reports? Nope. All right, I'll jump over to the mayor's report. Fairly short tonight. I do want to put, give a shout out to the organizers of the boat parade and golf cart parade down by the lake for, for, for the third and fourth of July. The golf cart parade set a record with a hundred and twenty decorated golf carts. The first ones were back before the last ones got started. So it was, it was pretty amazing. It was, it was pretty hot too, but they, they worked really well. I know Jen, Jen and Mikhail were able to pull, pull the group together, so it was more of a community sponsored event this time. Packaged along with the concert and the fireworks. And again, huge shout out to, to the staff for setting up and breaking down from the concert, making sure everything, you know, went well. Thank you to the Kiwanis for the food service. I understand there was a food run partway through the night and then ran out as well.
We just had to roll down at nine thirty. We ran out.
Yeah.
Everything's gone.
Yeah, it was incredible. So I know, I, I will note though, as a preview to the budget for twenty twenty-five, I will be requesting additional funds for the fireworks because prices went up this year and because of that, the show was not nearly as long as we have had in the past. That's just inflation for you. So we'll be discussing that for the next couple of years to see what that budget might look like in any sort of automatic escalator. That, that's just preview of things to come. Farmer's Market's been going well. Thank you for those who have been helping to participate. And I don't know if you guys saw the press release for the Spirit of the Blue Grant Award that was done last Monday. It was thirty-three thousand dollar grant to get higher. Come on, come on, just describe the vests better. You can describe the vest, vest better than I can.
Now, so it was thirty-three thousand dollars in order to get the vest and actually the plates that were level four protection for all the active shooter scenarios that we may have. And then we didn't have place for every officer and now we do.
Yep, and I had the pleasure of trying on Chief Simmons's vest and holy cow. And that was not including all the other gear, so more power to you guys.
What does it weigh, all that stuff?
Well, for the, for the plates themselves were about fourteen pounds or so, right? And then I talked, saw Dave Howard, Officer Howard today, and I think he said the rest of his stuff weighs about thirty-five pounds. Is that about right? Yeah. Yeah. So it's a lot. Upcoming, we've got the Steering Committee of Elected Officials, discussions are ongoing with regards to population planning and whatnot. We have another meeting, that, that meeting's tomorrow and Lisa and I have a, have a plan to have some communication going during the meeting. So she can throw, throw, throw some stuff at me if, if I miss and make sure that our voice is well heard from here in Liberty Lake because the, the county is going down a path of trying to prescribe the hows instead of the result. We, and we believe the how you get there should be left up to the, the jurisdictions. No need to talk about the library's soiree. Looking forward to that tomorrow. Couple grand openings, if you guys want to put these on your calendars, the I C C U grand opening is Thursday at ten A M. Emory's grand opening is all day on Friday from eleven A M. to ten P M. And note, they are closed on Tuesdays. I went to meet someone there for lunch today and they were closed. I'm used to restaurants being closed on Mondays. What was that called? Uh, Emory's Meatery and Brewery. I know I often get the full name right.
Is that the meat place?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
So just at Wellington and Indy and Harvard.
Okay, okay.
Yep. Spokane County Emergency Management Policy Board is coming up, the G S I Regional Advocacy Committee. Councilmember Kurtz and I have our first in-person session with the Washington, Association of Washington City's Coalition of Elected Leaders Institute that we were selected for. So we're, that's here in town and I'm working with A W C to try to plan a dinner out with everybody on that Friday evening. And then we have the Valley Chamber Board meeting coming up. I know there's more, but those are the highlights. And I guess we will move over to the city administrator report.
All right, thanks, Mayor. Looking down the events and reminders for the next couple of weeks, you'll see we start out with Touch a Truck. Its return is this Friday in Orchard Park, starting at ten A M. That's always a popular event. And so if you're interested in seeing large work vehicles and other kinds of pieces of equipment, come out to Orchard Park and join us. A little bit later on the calendar, starting July twenty-ninth, we've got the Challengers Sports Soccer Camp starting at Rocky Hill Park. And then looking a little bit farther out from that, one of our signature events here in the city of Liberty Lake is Barefoot in the Park. That will be occurring August third at Pavilion Park. And all of those things and more, you can find more information on our website and you can link to our summer events calendar and, and get dates, times, locations for those things and others as well. If we look forward to August sixth, August sixth is primary election day, however, if you are still needing to register to vote, you can do that in person up to August the sixth. But you can do it online up to July twenty-ninth. And so primary ballots will be distributed on July nineteenth, which is coming up on Friday. And so all of this is happening very quickly, starting on Friday. So the key date to keep in mind is August sixth, in-person registration up to that date and you can still vote in the primary election. And then lastly, on events, the Northwest Economic Development Forum is happening, hosted by the Department of Commerce between August fifth and eighth, the only is happening uh, hosted by the Department of Commerce between August 5th and 8th. The only reason I'm mentioning it, this is because I'm attending. It's in Lacey, and so I'll be joining the August 6th council meeting remotely. Um, any questions about the event reminders for this time? All right. Uh, moving on, um, our first briefing for you uh, is related to Park and Recreation Month, and I'm going to ask Jen to come up uh, and introduce maybe some, some team members, but as she's doing that, just to give you some brief information about what this is. So um, since the mid eighties, uh, local governments across the U.S. have been observing Park and Recreation Month in July. So we're, July is Park and Recreation Month. And the commemoration really helps to remind residents and visitors um, of the role that parks and recreation facilities play in building healthy, vibrant and resilient communities. And so the theme of the 2024 Park and Recreation Month is where you belong. Um, and I thought that was interesting because in our strategic plan, in our quality of life, which covers our amenities and open spaces, we use the word belonging. And so these dovetail very nicely, at least for 2024. And so this particular theme highlights the centrality of parks and recreation facilities and promoting belonging in communities across the country. And so just some facts, you all probably have heard these before and know them. Uh, but park users visit inclusive parks and recreation facilities nearly twice as often as they do non-inclusive parks. Um, having access to parks and other recreation facilities is consistently tied to higher physical activity levels for both adults and youth. Parks and open spaces help produce positive environmental impacts. Proximity to parks increases residential property values. Eighty-four percent of adults seek high-quality parks and recreation when choosing a place to live. And then ninety-two percent of adults say spending time at their local parks uh, provides a boost to their mental health. And what I thought was interesting is when you look at the um, uh, survey results that we talked about last week and will continue to bring um, to, to counsel over uh, the next several months. Is that local parks and recreation programs help enhance quality of life. And so the responses that we got from our survey helped validate this. Um, we asked uh, respondents to the survey to tell us one thing, and this was a free form field, so they could write anything they wanted. One thing that has the greatest positive impact on their quality of life in Liberty Lake. And twenty-two percent of the respondents said either parks, trails or golf courses. Um, and so they could have said anything and twenty-two percent of them said those three things. Um, and one hundred percent of respondents said that the cleanliness of our parks and open spaces are important factors. And they're feeling satisfied with their overall quality of life in Liberty Lake. Um, so very tight connection there with quality of life. In addition, um, as part of Park and Recreation Month, Friday, July 19th, which coincides with Touch a Truck, um, we're recognizing Park and Recreation Professionals Day. Uh, and this is a day within the month to celebrate all the dedicated park and recreation professionals who help make our parks and recreation facilities a trophy feature for the city of Liberty Lake. And with that, I'm going to turn the podium over to Jen uh, to say a few words about the team. Jen?
So I think we have Derek and Mikell joining us on Zoom this evening. If you're on, go ahead and uh, speak up if you can. If not, I just wanted to.
Mikell's on, I think as we're trying to promote.
Oh, they can't talk until they're promoted.
Can you hear me?
Yes. I hear you, Mikell. Do you have anything you want to add as far as, I know you're the, one of the newest employees of our group. Um, maybe you have a perspective you'd like to share about, about what you walked into?
Yeah, so uh, so I've enjoyed, enjoyed, enjoyed the time I've been here so far and just being able to see where Liberty Lake is at, where it can go in the future. Um, I was just, yeah, I live in Idaho and I was just refer, or uh, coaching my daughter's flag football team. And I was, she, I'd signed her up in a town that I used to work for. And one of the kids that was refereeing her game was a kid that I had coached ten years ago when he was uh, fifth or five years old. And so it was like, it was really interesting sitting in that full circle where Parks Rec gives opportunities for kids to, you know, learn new things, learn a sport that he may not have had a chance to play. And then as he's becoming a teenager, get, have his first job. And how in, I would have mentioned just a minute ago that there's this inclusivity of Parks Rec and how it's important. And a lot of times kids don't know what or where they want to do until they try something out. And so being able to see the community events in Liberty Lake and seeing the other things that could potentially be done in the future where different groups can learn and try new things and see where they fit in the community, I think is a great aspect and idea of Parks and Recreation.
Thank you, Mikell. And I think that Mikell and I talk often. He came from Idaho uh, on the Parks and Rec side and I think the one common thing that we find as we have our conversations is how different it was over there and how different it is here now. Um, but I think that I see in Mikell an excitement for all of the potential opportunities we have to grow recreation opportunities here. And now really make something um, really cool and great out of recreation programming. So um, we're really glad to have him on board. So thank you, Mikell.
Welcome.
Is Derek on? Okay. He didn't know if he could make it tonight, so.
So thanks, Jen, uh, for that. And so I'd like to close this out by saying on, on Friday in particular, but any day, right? Uh, Jen, Mikell, Derek, Chris Johnston, his team, all of those folks that help manage our parks and recreation facilities, um, tell them thanks. Uh, none of this would be possible without their hard work and dedication. Any questions about that?
Yeah, I was gonna uh, ask a quick question, perhaps of, of Jen. I, I received an email about a week and a half ago from a citizen who really wanted to see us do more youth rec activities. Um, or maybe even a rec league. Um, so I, I guess this isn't so much of a question, but just something to, to kind of throw out there that I think there is a, a desire to have more activities, um, whether that be a rec league or, or something for, for those kids. And I know that's a big, a big ask, but I just wanted to make sure I brought it up.
Yeah, you bet. Uh, and, and it's coming. Um, last year was, was the implementation of several programs that came to us out of the woodwork and we have begun to implement through um, having Mikell here. He's, he's capable of taking those on and, and actually our very first, it's not necessarily youth, but our very first league program is starting now and it's Liberty Lake Pickleball League. So um, I don't think they've been doing much advertising. They've been trying to get a schedule together and everything, but that is actually contracted, contracted through the city. So. Thank you. Great. Looking forward to things to come.
All right. Thanks, Jen. Um, now I'm going to invite Lisa Key up to the podium to uh, brief council and give you a code enforcement update.
So Jen gets to talk about the fun stuff. The less fun stuff. Um, Evan, can you bring up my presentation, please? So um, uh, give you a little bit of background on where we're at with code enforcement. And I really hope that no one misses the irony of the sign on that uh, um, so, so yeah, so um, uh, we are in uh, one of our busy seasons for code enforcement. Next slide, please. And it has been a tough year. So um, what, what are the types of code enforcement issues that we deal with? Um, uh, typically we're dealing with signs in the right of way, and that's both off-premise commercial signs, which are not from, which are not allowed anywhere in the city. And um, political signs are not allowed in the right of way. And we are in the midst of that season. Um, we are dealing a lot right now with weeds. Weeds are a summer thing. Ice and snow removal is a winter thing, but uh, but tho- those are probably our two most frequent complaints. We also deal some with um, with um, the uh, repair and upkeep of homes or garbage in the yard or um, uh, those are probably the biggest ones we deal with, but we deal with other things too. We, I mean, um, we get complaints on sidewalks all the time. Trees either, either blocking the clear view vision or um, hanging too low. Um, we get complaints related to dust, noise, erosion control, tracking onto our streets. Um, we have, we get complaints about businesses operating out of their homes. We get complaints about um, Airbnb's, which are not allowed at all in the city. Um, we also get complaints about immaculate construction, people without, building without building permits. So lots of fun stuff. And next slide, please. So I want to talk to you a little bit about our process. It is a complaint-driven process. Um, so uh, first bullet. So how do we receive complaints? So um, a variety of different mechanisms. Um, everybody in the city hall uh, gets calls, complaints, and most of them get directed to me or my staff. But um, we have people that walk in, we have people that email, we have people that submit on our webs, website. We actually invite them to, to file complaints on our website. And um, Kelsey typically fields those and directs them to us. So most of my staff at any given time is probably handling a handful of code enforcement any given week. Um, I probably get a lot more and then end up directing them when I can. Next slide, please. So that, that's how many complaints we get. We get a lot. We get a lot. However, it's not anything that you're necessarily going to see in most of our statistics. Next slide, please. Because of the way we handle our complaints. When complaints come in, we try and bring to the process our customer service ethos. Both for the complainants and the potential violators. And so um, every complaint we get, we first of all have to go out and verify it. We take pictures, whatever. If we know who the owner is, if it's a business or we know who the property owner is and whatnot, the first thing we do is try and be relational. Give them a call and say, hey, I got a complaint. And it's amazing, we do have frequent flyers with both weeds and snow removal. But it's um, but when I call these folks, they're right on cleaning it up. They, they may have, they may have let it slide and whatnot for the most part. Uh, we do the same thing with residential. It's a little tougher with residential because we may not know or may not have the um, have the person's address. Sometimes it'll, it'll be, or I will have their address. We won't have necessarily have their email or anything other than a mailing address. That's, that's our least favorite type of situation. Occasionally we'll go up and knock on the door. But more often than not, when it's a residential, we try and avoid that. It's not a great thing. If we have to do that, um, very often we'll have uh, PD uh, with us. Um, and we do have some areas where some of PD's frequent flyers are also our frequent flyers. And so that's, uh, so that's uh, certainly a challenge. Um, next slide, please. So how do we, how we track the complaints? We only really track the complaints when the, they rise to the level of a formal violation letter. And so that, we typically, next slide, please, or next. Uh, we typically try calling them, dealing with them. We get them on the phone. Most often times the answer is yes, we're going to do something about it or, but they may need time to do it. We need to, according to the code, we need to give them 14 days when, when we're actually filing a letter of violation. Typically, that's not an unreasonable turnaround time. Um, and we've, we've had a number of complaints recently where we are working with them. I haven't filed a, a formal violation letter yet because I'm talking to the property owner. Uh, we've had some complaints out on Mission. The property owner did what he typically does, which is send somebody out to spray. This is an unusual weed year. Um, between the heat and, and whatnot. Um, we had a, a, an early, early growing season and now it's really hot and there, there, it's just challenging. There's a lot of weeds this year. He went out, he sprayed it. So unfortunately, they, they were too far gone when he sprayed it. He's a, you know, it's a vacant property parcel, whatever. Um, so call him back up. Um, looks like we're still getting complaints, went out, took some more pictures. Looks like you're going to have to mow it. Oh, well, we don't typically do that. So he's, he now has to line somebody up to do that. Again, these things sometimes take time. Um, but again, at the point at which we're not getting cooperation on the part of the property owner. We've got situations where um, uh, there's another one out on, on uh, Mission Avenue in the uh, uh, in the River District where the trees died. Well, unfortunately, um, he had to fire his last landscaper. And he just brought somebody new on board. Not really the time to plant trees. He's trying to work with them, but he also wants the new trees to survive. So we have, we, we put into, we keep notes, we track kind of where we're at with it. We have timelines and check-ins. Um, he indicated that we would probably see something happening in the next two weeks or so. So we keep tabs on it and every, every time we have to touch it again, these touches take time. Um, which is again, one of the reasons why uh, we included a position for a code enforcement officer in this year's budget. Um, but again, when it right, rises to the level where we're not getting a response, then we go to the violation letter. And so they have 14 days. Next slide, please. Uh, we'll threaten them with penalties. There are, the code says that we can fine them two hundred fifty dollars per day per violation. Um, and we go through a process of increase, increasingly um, stern letters and try and keep the pressure on. We, depending upon the situation, if it's tied to a development, I can, I have some tools in the toolbox to hold up the development moving forward. If they're not addressing this, you have to be in compliance with the code in order to record your final plat, as an example. And we use that for um, the prior owner of, of the Hawkstone Development. Um, and that was an effective tool. But again, to actually levy the fines, we um, were a little challenged. Um, have to issue a ticket and then uh, judge has to actually enforce it. Um, and in the scheme of things, I have to tell you that our code enforcement issues probably don't rate very high with the, with the uh, justice system in terms, as compared to uh, some of the other more serious crimes that the, our, our courts are handling. So um, that is one of our challenges and I, I've said it before and I, I've said it to you before, it, it's, it's a process. And um, it does take a lot of staff time. Um, but we are aware of the issues. We are complaint driven. And so if um, it's interesting because we're in the midst of political season. We haven't gotten a lot of complaints on political signs. Not touching what we haven't gotten a complaint on.
And I just haven't had a chance to get out yet and send my pictures in.
A- again, all you have to do is drop us an email and let us know the location and, and we will take care of it. If it's political signs, as you all know, our process is, we have to document and first of all, nobody knows where the right of way is except for our crews when they're mowing. The crews mow in the right of way. If they're mowing in the right of way and it's in their way, we ask them to take a picture, send it to me, pick up the sign, we'll doc, we'll do the documentation on it and then we will uh, notify the uh, the um, person whose sign it is. Again, a lot of touches. Takes a lot of time, a lot of, and a lot of staff time, a lot of different people touching it, a lot of different times in order to do it. I will say that one of the things that you, you were generous enough in the budget last year to provide us with funding for a code enforcement officer. As you know, we have had some staffing challenges trying to get up to speed and have triaged our hiring. Now that I have Luca on board and I, there he is. Now that I have Luke on board, the next priority is the code enforcement officer. Um, Anthony Sanich, our project manager. Um, Anthony Sanich, our project manager, has now moved out to the Public Works Yard, so I actually do have a place for this person to go. So when I have the time to actually finish the job description and send it to Heidi, um, we will begin the recruitment process. But for now, we're, it's catch as catch can. Um, and this is, this is one of the things that our citizens expect of us to be responsive. And so again, with our customer service ethos, we're always trying to resolve the issues, but do it in a being solution oriented and relational in how we're dealing with both the complainants and um, and the uh, the people who are maybe in violation. Next slide, please. So that's my briefing on code enforcement. Uh, we're, we're doing our best and we're trying to stay ahead of the weeds and it is a bad weed year and we are getting the complaints and so we are working with the owners. Questions for me?
Any questions? I thank you for your efforts. And we tried, I I know I try to direct everybody to the how do I on the website. Then they can follow the prompts, so you have a record.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you.
Thanks.
All right. Thanks, Lisa. Appreciate the update. Um, looking at the next item, twenty twenty five budget engagement. Uh, between tonight's meeting and when the mayor presents the preliminary budget, assuming nothing on the calendar changes between now and there, there are approximately eleven weeks. Uh, between tonight's meeting and the final budget hearing, there are approximately seventeen weeks. And so in those two timeframes, the now that we, now that we have the data from the um, community satisfaction survey, which I mentioned before and briefed you all on last week and in part, um, we're going to be taking some of those questions that were designed to get people to look forward and tell us what they wanted to see in the future. And we're going to shape those into some um, what I'm calling seed questions that we'll put out on our forum that was launched a couple of weeks ago to get some specific conversations started and some dialogue rolling uh in from the community on those items. Um, for example, we saw a heavy concentration of public safety. Um, but public safety has a lot of different variables and so we can foresee a couple of questions on different aspects of public safety that we would want to put out there to spark some additional conversation to get some more detail of what people want to see with respect to investment in public safety, those kinds of things. Um, and then, like we talked about before, we've, we've got a what's called a budget simulator being developed so that when the budget actually uh is presented to the council, um, citizens will have the opportunity to go in and gamified, for lack of a better term, uh, change what they see in the budget to see what impact that change has on the bottom line. And so those are just a couple of techniques that we've got queued up um, over these next seventeen weeks to get as much positive feedback from the community as we can on the twenty twenty five budget. Um, any questions on that before we move on? And so I realized that I had not put the departmental reports on here. Um, but you received the departmental reports and so wanted to give you the opportunity to ask any questions if you have any of those department heads, Councilmember Spencer.
Thanks, Mark. Uh, this question's for Kyle. Um, looking at the TBD sales tax disbursement, uh, the projecting out over twelve months to seventy, seven hundred and eight thousand. Um, if I remember right, uh, the, the utility tax was bringing in just under a million. Is that right?
That's correct.
So, so it looks like we're gonna be a lot closer just with uh the, the TBD uh, with, without the supplementation perhaps of the reduced utility tax.
Yes, and even more so, our, our timeline for this implementation was delayed a little bit by Department of Revenue's implementation of the TBD sales tax. And so we're planning September first to roll that back to one percent. So we've gotten essentially eight months of collection of three percent of the utility tax as well. It should further serve to provide a softer landing uh into the TBD sales tax.
Thank you.
Yeah, based on what those numbers are looking at, I'm going to be recommending for twenty twenty five to take away the rest of this utility tax, subject to your vote, of course.
Any other questions?
Go ahead.
Um, this is for Lisa and I'm trying to find it in here now, but in your report, um, on the Mission Avenue or overlay, um, country visited to Multer, there's something about conflicting records of survey. What is that about?
So we have, uh, Parametrics right now is working on the survey to try and provide us with some documentation. There are two different records of survey that are filed, one that seems to indicate that part of the sidewalk and part of the project area is actually in uh, the Homestead uh, Commercial Centers uh, property. And we believe that that is incorrect. And um, again, we have to provide the documentation so that we can show that there's no right of way needed for the federal highway project for the grant. So, so, but i- it just, it was just a surprise.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so, so we're, we're trying to get that cleaned up.
So seeing none others, that concludes my report.
All right. Thank you very much. Next up, we have Planning Commission. It's like Mr. Solberg is here to fill us in on Planning Commission.
I'm Solberg, reporting for the Planning Commission. Uh, since the last time that Commissioner uh, Mann gave you a report, uh, I'm gonna just sort of update. We I'll start with the end in that we had two public hearings on the amendments having to do with the lighting code and the fueling stations last week. You will be getting recommendations from us and from the staff. But before that, we had workshops uh, on the fueling stations only in February, uh, February fourteenth, March thirteenth. And lighting only on April tenth and then combined workshops June uh, uh, May eighth and June thirteenth. So last July tenth, that's like the sixth series of meetings that we've had, workshops and meetings on these two issues. Um, so that we can resolve these and move on to our comp plan. Um, even with some absent uh commissioners, our two adjunct commissioners did a great job during the discussion. I would just like to say on behalf of the commission, kudos to our planning staff who, when you see the report, you'll see as usual, it's very detailed. Before we find a spelling error, it's, it's a surprise. Um, which really helped uh guide our discussion on these issues. I don't think that there's anything else unless you have a um, question. Uh, I will say this because we're all aware of the information that is on social media. Um, the planning commission's charge is not to uh take into account in a official hearing and especially in our public hearing, comments that we don't know where they came from. They may not have gone through the process. Uh, we did have a lot of input from our citizens at the meeting and that included um emails as well. Uh, we took the time, especially Lisa, took the time to um, answer questions and in fact, uh, that kept the meeting at pretty short because um, when she explained one of the questions that was raised, uh, three of the people who were there had answered their questions as well. So, uh, I would say that uh, our, our job is to be prepared, deliberate on the issue at hand, represent the community's best interest to the city council and not take sides on those issues that come up on social media. Any questions?
No, I just want to thank you for your very hard work on this. I know it's been challenging, um, given all the social media presence and everything. And it will continue to be challenging as, as it gets to the council and and gets through the process. Thanks. All right. Next up, we have Parks and Arts. Welcome.
Uh, John Bar for Parks and Arts and I believe we have a slide deck. Oh, you're gonna challenge me with my uh um, dirty glasses. Um, well, we had our uh city council workshop and strategic plan and we really want to thank the city council for the meeting on July second. We had our regular scheduled meeting on the first, but the meeting on the second, I think we had some robust discussion and it was really, I was really impressed. We had four commissioners in attendance and I think that was, it was very good meeting. Um, we had great discussion uh, that regarding potential projects and priorities. Commission that and the commission members to focus on slipifying the twenty twenty five budget and multi-year strategic plan for submission. And mission members will research and present ideas for future ordinance. Next slide, please. Thank you. And then for the Trailhead Art Walls, um, this has been discussed previously. Um, the Richland High School Art Gallery has been mounted. And it will remain for the year and placed annually at the end of each school year with new student art and call to artists. Um, went out for the whimsical um, map murals expected to believe to uh, winning uh, proposed by August, the mural to be completed in twenty twenty four. Next slide, please. And then for new projects, the Kramer Parkway Intersection Art. Uh, the location is the city-owned property Kramer Parkway and Central Vista Drive. As to the timeline, the targeting is a twenty twenty four sculpture installation. But no submissions have been received today on this. Um, and no potential artists have been um, obtained. So that Laura does a great job on shepherding these projects, but uh, there's no no activity so far. Next slide, please. Then for the new project, Pavilion Park Play Equipment, it's reviewed in kind play equipment replacement. And recommending gathering community feedback to review the needs of the park and the desires of the community before moving forward with play equipment procurement. And I think we discussed that at our uh, July second meeting as well. And then, and then lastly, we have an open position, an adjunct commissioner and it's recommended that approval of Audrey White as student commissioner.
Right, and we'll be hearing from her later. Does anybody have any questions? Go ahead, Councilmember Ball.
On the um, call for artists for the sculpture at Kramer, and have you, are you reaching out like beyond Liberty Lake to artists, um, like in Spokane or or Lane or?
I know Laura's, she said she'd sent out eighty um, requests and there she received no response. So she was going to increase her geographic area to try to get the more, more possible submissions.
Surprising, nobody's interested.
Hey, uh, Councilmember Spencer.
Thank you. Um, for that location, it seems like in the meantime, we know gardener that could put something really beautiful in there.
I'd be happy to.
All right. Do you have any other questions? We, we really appreciate the update, looking forward to what's coming in the future. Thanks so much. All right, next up is here we go, the Relics Turn Water District. You know, we don't have anybody here in, in houses. Is there anybody online?
No.
Okay. All right. So if somebody from Water and Sewer District ends up joining a little bit later, we'll try to squeeze them in. So that brings us to our workshop discussions. First one up is the Lions Club Arboretum Project. Welcome back up, Jen.
Hello again. Council and Mayor, thank you for your time. We wanted to uh, give you an update and ask for direction moving forward on the Lions Club paver project in our arboretum. So as you recall, um, quite some time ago, there was a discussion, a donation uh, from the Lions Club in the amount of ten thousand dollars for picnic tables and so, and a paver project. Um, with the idea being three paver patios, I think roughly ten by ten down in our arboretum strategically placed, um, so that the intent would be we could put the picnic tables on top with maybe a future potential for growth, maybe adding gazebos over the top, um, intertwining vines of some sort, um, even hosting wine and, and brewing classes or tasting or who knows what down there. So lots of potential for some growth and even programming down there. Um, where we left it was the donation was approved by council. Um, there was, as I understand, and as staff understands, a commitment from council to match that donation. Um, since then, during that time, we've met several times and had several communications with the Lions Club to move forward. And next steps, so next steps are, we have put a request for quotes out to the small works roster through MRSC, received um, two bids. And we do have a low, a low quote that falls within that dollar amount that with the match included. Um, and so what I wanted to kind of do tonight, rather than just put it on an agenda and not have a refresher on what this was all about, give an opportunity to ask questions. Um, look forward to maybe some guidance of putting it on a future agenda for approval, for approving that low quote to move forward with installing those pavers once they are, once they arrive. Um, potentially this fall, the idea would be to have all the pavers collected and stored and then installed into these three paver pads in the fall. So I think that's super high level, super brief. Um, that's as staff's recollection of the discussion from, I think it was last fall when this discussion happened, when the donation happened. So are there any questions? I get, I think tonight I would ask for um, guidance to move forward with putting on the next agenda and agreement for services for the low quote that we received to move forward in the fall, once the pavers are collected in installing these three paver pads or however many paver um, stones we have uh, quantity for, you know, I, I don't know that. You, do you want to pass that?
Sure, I'll just pass these out this way.
So this, that she's passing out gives you an idea of what the paver pad will look like. And I think actually in the center, we're gonna do a concrete surface. Uh, so whether that'll be checkerboard or not, I don't know, but um, we need, we need an anchor, a solid solid single surface to anchor those picnic tables and we don't want to do that on the pavers themselves. So the center likely would be just a solid piece of concrete to mount and anchor those picnic tables. So they don't get moved onto the etched pavers and scrape and scuff them up.
Jen, is there an approximate layout of where these will be occurring?
Yes, there is, and I almost brought that slide. But um, they, they kind of will run through the middle of the arboretum to the, I guess it would be the south of the community gardens in a staggering pattern across, kind of encompassing that, that walking path that goes through the middle.
And for your perception of those paths, they, they'd work well with the surrounding area and they work well with the landscaping that has to be done and all that.
Yes, so that is a discussion that has happened with staff and will continue to happen with staff. There is irrigation down there. Um, mowing to consider path, you know, distance between paver and, and path and is it conducive for a mower to get through without crawling over these, you know, these pavers? So, yeah, we, we will make sure the placement and Lions Club has been fantastic about kind of allowing us to to pick and choose within that idea set, um, what we think functionally is gonna work the best for maintenance as well as, as their wish for where they go. So they've been very flexible.
I just compliment and say I'm so supportive and so excited about this project. It's a compliment of our volunteer groups and our, our city and support. And so um, I just want to make sure that it's lockstep with your work to try and make sure that uh, these, these group, these places are landscaped and can be maintained and sustained for the long term.
Thank you. Right. And about um, Councilmember Kennedy.
I certainly um endorse Councilman Dunn's comments. I'm excited about what's going on down there. You know, I've always looked at that area as somewhat of a hidden gem for the city. Uh, a lot of people are probably not a think or aware of where that is or how much it's used. But I mentioned this in the past, that that area is a main walking and golf cart corridor for many, many residents down there that can get to the downtown area, can get to Trailhead, can get to the grocery store by not getting in the car and going down sidewalks, things of that sort there. Uh, this has been brought up in the past and, and I would like, like to propose to the city to put on a fast track to look at additional things we wanted to do to that area. I know it has come up in the past, the discussion is that looking at putting bathrooms down there. I would recommend for the city to start the discussion immediately that if we're in the process of doing, what we're doing there now is to look at, what would it cost to do that? We could certainly maybe look at trying to get something like that started this year. I know that somebody would look at and say, well, we don't have that in the budget, but we can do an amendment or something like that. Because if we have the momentum to move forward on that area now, I think it would be great. Because if we have the momentum to move forward on that area now, I think it would be great to look at the additional things that we can do there. If not, it'll just get kicked down the road. And years down the road, somebody else is going to sit where I am and say, well, why don't we look at putting in bathrooms? Now, that, once again, because that area has traveled so much. With the bathrooms being there, additional lighting and stuff, it would be just great for the city.
So I.
Excited about that program.
As I recall, that the bathrooms are called out on the unfunded project list on the CFP.
That's correct, the as part of the adoption of the current CFP, the restrooms in the arboretum were placed on the unfunded projects list.
Then I can get excited about getting it funded. Thank you.
Do you have any other comments or questions, Councilmember Ball?
Okay, I wasn't here last fall, I mean, on council side. What I don't understand is people are going to have to pay for these pavers, right?
Yes.
Okay, so. Help me out here, we have ten thousand from the Lions Club matched by the city. Correct? And so how much of the pavers, I mean, how does this work financially?
So the pavers are being purchased through the Lions Club. That's not part of the city's side of things. They, I believe it's a funding process or a donation process. Yeah, cool.
Yeah, please help me out here.
So being on the Lions Club, the pavers. You can find at holderengraving.com slash Liberty Lake. And all of the funds that are going to be raised during these projects are going to stay here in Liberty Lake.
Well, right, I understand that, but.
And there's other things inside of the arboretum that still need to be taken care of. Signage, I have no entry sign.
Right, right.
Particular point.
Right.
The signage for all of the plantings still need to be done. All of the trees that are planted, I need to be identified. So all of those things still need to have funding for them. And that's what we're hoping to do.
Okay, so I walked through there the other day because I was, I did not understand what you're trying to do down here. And I did see some foliage signs and the one I saw in particular, that was like. It was dead, whatever it was planted there, there, it did not look like anything was there.
And I believe that was put in a few years ago by the garden club.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, and then my other question is, okay, suppose you don't have a golf cart and, you know, you don't. Want to walk that far or whatever, is there any parking to to get to this?
At the end of Colony Court. You can go ahead and park and as well as at the end of Liberty Lake City Hall. You'll have parking right there.
The end of what now?
Liberty Lake City Hall.
Right, right out here.
Yeah, and that's legal to park there and, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Come take a peek.
I've been there, but I just don't get it. So anyway, okay, thank you.
All right, anybody else? All right, not seeing any, we will, I guess, I guess if there's no objections.
Yeah.
Then we'll have this back on the next agenda for approval.
Let's do it that way. Very good, thank.
All right. Thank you. All right, next we are up to ordinance review committee. Mark, I guess we'll start with you.
All right, Evan's going to fire up the presentation that we had earlier, but you've got it in front of you. And so we'll start the discussion with proposal number two. And as you'll recall, thinking back specifically again to the council retreat. Through that discussion, there was no real consensus for recreating the council committees. That that used to be the Finance Committee, the Public Safety Committee and the Code Enforcement slash. Community Development Committee, for lack of a better term. But there was some discussion about creating a specified committee to take a look specifically at ordinance review. And so as you'll see here in proposal number two, in order to put something like that, to implement something like that. Through the rules of procedure, we would need to amend sections eleven and twelve. Or create a section twelve, which essentially just moves down current section eleven. And so if you flip to the page. As Evan's queuing it up, eleven dot one. All of that red text is a new section. And so we would be inserting the language to define standing committee. And we would then further define the purpose of the committee in section A and B. And so this would be a committee specifically for ordinance review. And recommendation for revisions to the city's code of ordinances. And and that's a general term to mean either something in the municipal code. Or in any adopted ordinance. And so that's essentially the. Opportunity here for discussion is to whether we want to amend the rules of procedure to add the language, creating the ordinance review committee. It also has got some language in there about the appointment of members and their their respective terms. And then if you flip over really quickly, you'll just see the only change to the suspension and amendment of rule section is making it. Section twelve. Twelve dot one and twelve dot two, it is currently eleven, eleven dot one and eleven dot two, so there's no content change there. It's just a sliding down and renumbering as a result of creating a new section eleven. And with that, I'll turn the floor over to council for discussion.
Councilmember Kennedy.
Good discussion, why not? Let's look at all possibilities of what we have and should there be changed? For these type of committees, just to reiterate, we had these committees in years past. And one of the main reasons we went to the six o'clock workshop is to eliminate these positions. And what was looked at at the time is it became anti-productive to have three council members go over certain items. And then come and give a report, and then we had the possibility of one of the remaining four to say, I'm sorry, I wasn't privy to that. So I don't want to move forward with this or it got kicked down the road. So what I would have to look at to support this, if it does pass, I'll be very supportive and be involved with it. But what I'd have to look at, that if we had this and it didn't work, and we changed to what we have, is it not working what we have? How is it not working for us to go back to what we had before?
So for clarification, this one is specifically for the ordinance review committee, not the other old committees.
Yeah, but that was all part of it, that this would be a separate committee just for that particular item on it. But we still, that was included in everything before, how we always worked with in the past, that. The council as a whole, we would get together and say, okay, this, here's the recommendations I have. And we would have that discussion with all of us, not just a few. And I think that's been very productive. In the past, and I think I would certainly be in favor of moving forward in the same direction.
Yeah, Councilmember Mayor Protim.
Just have three questions, Mark, or three comments. One, I know we talked about potentially doing this on a temporary basis or having an expiration date. On it, so I'm wondering if if we could add that perhaps as a. Maybe we just strike all of B and just put in there that this will expire on December thirty first or something like that. And the reason for that is is given the concerns about whether we want. Council committees or not, this gives us essentially six months to go through and see, okay, how does this process work? And are we, is it doing what we intended it to do? Second question is, my notes were about whether. Since the mayor cannot vote on an ordinance. She could come in and veto one or or approve it, but she can't, if it was a tie, she couldn't vote on an ordinance. So I'm wondering if the mayor. And not just this mayor, but a mayor should be on this committee. And then the, kind of the second part to that question, and the reason why I bring that up is, do we want an odd number? On it as opposed to an even number, so if there's a dispute, let's say, on this committee about whether to bring something forward. And it's two, two, let's say, what happens with that? And we obviously don't want to add another council member because then we'd have the the. Quorum, right, so I'm just trying to figure out. And maybe this is a Mark question as well, or excuse me, a Sean question as well, about how that would work if if there were some disputes. Since we have an even number with the mayor.
I guess I'd like to throw in, I don't have to be the chair, I mean, as far as I'm concerned, there can be three council members and y'all elect a chair out of the three. I don't have to. My name doesn't necessarily have to be on there.
Couple things. One, these are the council rules, so these are for the council members.
Yeah.
Two, I I wouldn't envision it to be any different than the mayor running a council meeting.
Right.
But she doesn't vote on anything, right, that that happens. So to the extent that it, she would be part of this committee and and be the chair, it would probably run in a similar fashion.
So then, does that answer the question then about the, if we were to vote on something?
It would be the committee members, the council members that would be, you know, making that decision, especially in this situation with regard to to an ordinance.
Right.
Could you get in the weeds and say, well, is this an approval of an ordinance versus something come out of the committee? Probably, but I think the best practice would be that she just doesn't participate in that process of voting.
Okay.
More more more, just.
Right.
Steer steering the discussion, making sure things are documented properly and and whatnot. I see Councilmember Kurtz's hands up.
My question is, do we need to actually put this into the ordinance for rules and procedures? Or were we doing more of like an ad hoc, going through all the ordinances type of a situation? Because I heard Mayor Protim say that an expiration date, but I. I don't know that we would put that in an ordinance, so I'm just trying to really figure out if we really need to put this committee in the rules and procedures.
Yeah, like similar question, Sean.
Funny you should say that, I'm actually going back through the rules right now to do that. I. I don't think it's necessary, I mean, the council can have council members get together and make discussions and have discussions relative to a particular. Topic, in this case, ordinances. The issue would be is if you had more than three.
Right.
Right, so if you had just three and you wanted to try it temporarily, I don't think it's an issue relative to that. Because ultimately, whatever comes from the committee is going to come back to the council for consideration in a public meeting. And you're going to take action relative to that. So I don't know that maybe it's something you necessarily need to have in here right now, if you're trying to do it on a temporary basis. Until you make a determination of whether you think it's effective or not.
Could we, expanding on what what Councilmember Kurtz said, could it be more of a situation of. There, from time to time, the council may form. Temporary standing committees. To tackle.
City issues.
Yes, specific city issues, whatever it is, and just leave it at that.
Sure.
Just a suggestion. Councilmember Dunn.
I just speak in support of the ordinance review activity. What I see is a significant burden of action that I think is sufficient for a smaller group than the full council to execute. So I support the action of this committee, however, it needs to be coped with.
That's where Spencer.
Thank you, Mayor. I I think in my mind, this is kind of one of those chicken and egg issues. I think if we are going to move to this new meeting schedule of four times a month. Perhaps this would be something we could tackle in in between the the. The different meetings that we're having, but if not, then then perhaps we do need to have. You know, a smaller group separated.
Anybody else? Councilmember Kennedy.
If no one else has it, I'm still looking for. The answer to my question. Why do we need to change? What we have now, is it not working? Please explain to me and the citizens why it's not working for us to look at, make a change back to what we had before.
I guess I'm kind of confused by the question, I'll be perfectly honest. We're not asking to go back to what we've had before with three separate committees, this is a temporary. Committee to address a specific issue. We're not talking about adding something permanently like we had in the past. So maybe I'm totally misunderstanding what you're trying to ask.
What we have now is that if we're going to look at rules, regulations, ordinance and policies and procedures, it comes to the entire council. We all have input on that, it doesn't come down to three having that. It comes to the council, so everybody has the opportunity to participate on what is brought forward. That seems to be very productive.
Well, and and I think that that's the intent, was to have this small committee to do the the legwork and the cleanup. And again, this is just on ordinances, it's not policies and procedures which are separate, it's not on resolutions. It's on on the ordinance cleanup, again, you know, like, like if if I had gone ahead with, you know, some of the additional red lines. That I showed for the count, the rules of procedure I have, you know, for notification of being absent, you know, do we want to add city administrator as a person to contact? It's it's those type of cleanup things, it's not a, I don't foresee that this committee. You know, make wanting to make policy changes, maybe maybe a suggestion might come out of it, but then yes, that would need to come to the council for discussion. But I see this is a huge cleanup project. You know, is the wording right, or do we have a, and I've mentioned this before, you know, we use, we have have had at least in the past on a couple of occasions. Where we say clerk treasurer, while we don't have a clerk treasurer position, we have a clerk and we have a treasurer, now we have a finance director. It's those type of things I'm seeing this committee tackling, and if I'm, and if I'm off base, you guys, please, please let me know. But if you guys are looking at something different, I do have Councilmember Kurtz.
Yeah, I mean, I think, Mayor, I think you're the same understanding that I have, and if I'm if I'm off too, I want to hear that. But essentially, this is, this committee would be like deep in the weeds of the ordinances to really do that cleanup. And then, of course, bringing it back to the council to have some workshops, have that good discussion. But the 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 hard, detailed minutia piece would be done by this committee and again, brought back to the council. And I think there are people who are interested in in doing that work, myself being one of them. I mean, just really spending some time in a small group setting, just going through those details. And then again, bringing it back to the council to go through and and if there's any feedback from the full council together. But I think in a time-saving effort, it would be more efficient to have a small group versus seven, eight, nine of us. And and everybody else as a part of the meetings, I just don't think we have the bandwidth to do the city business all rested it. And do that in-depth work that this would require.
Thanks, anybody? Council, Mayor Protim.
Mayor, I want to make a motion to create an ordinance, a temporary ordinance review committee. Of, well, we can discuss of who in a second, but a temporary ordinance review committee that would review ordinances. This is a very long motion between now and the end of the year. Does that?
Second.
Great, so it's like we have a second on that, so the motion was to create a temporary committee to review ordinances between now and the end of the year. Is that correct?
Yeah.
All right, discussion.
Should we, should we enumerate how many, or you know, how many are on?
Please, please use a microphone.
Oh, I said, should we, you know, enumerate how many people will be on this committee?
This just establishes it.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, and then we can figure out how we want to structure it.
All right, all in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Yeah, those opposed? All right, motion passes five to two with Councilmembers Kennedy and Spencer dissenting. All right, so we have a temporary committee created.
So per what Jed was saying earlier, I I think it would. Be beneficial for us to see how this plays out between now and the end of the year. And then at the first of the year, figure out whether we want to put it in as an eleven point one and eleven point one A and all the other stuff. And then that gives us at least a five months of a runway to figure out if it's if it's successful or not.
All right, so.
Aside from reading about a motion in minutes, is there any other way to detect this committee exists?
What was your question?
Aside from reading about this in the minutes as a motion, is there any other way to detect that this committee exists? How else is it coded?
Well, I guess that from the standpoint of what you're going to do with it, and what I mean by that is. When they're going to meet, what the membership is going to be made up of, I mean, I think those things are, the council has to make those decisions. You know, to do that. I I understand that, but I think from the perspective of what you're trying to accomplish, you have to figure out those things first and how you put it together. I mean, I I think it's the, as Jed said, you know, the chicken and the egg thing, as far as. You have to establish a committee and then go through the process of what that committee looks like, so that's all I'm saying.
So next steps. I'm looking at you since you made the, since you made the motion.
I'm listening.
And I may interject something here to your expenses. You don't have to make all those answers tonight necessarily, right? It can be another discussion relative to, you know, what that looks like and what you want to do. It can just be the idea that we want to have a committee and then discuss how that makeup and the function of that works, you know, moving forward.
Okay.
So are are, do I hear any objection to putting this on a workshop for the next meeting? De- depending on what else is scheduled business-wise for the next meeting?
Can I, um, let me just throw this out and see if it gets support. I'll make a motion to uh have Councilmembers Kurtz, Councilmember Kennedy and and myself on the ordinance review committee, which would meet every other Friday between now and the end of the year.
Do we have a second? And we have a second.
Unless anybody else wants to serve on it too. I just remember that.
And we, we, Councilmembers Kurtz's hand is up.
Tell me about Friday.
What you said?
I, what you, tell, tell you.
Yeah, tell me about Friday. Like, when, when are you guys thinking? Just timeframe-wise and and how long we might meet?
Um, maybe like two o'clock for an hour.
Okay.
I don't know. We could, we could figure that.
Figure it out.
This is a start, two o'clock every Friday for an hour?
Every other Friday.
Every other Friday.
Before we start getting there, let's just go with what the motion is. In a second, let's not add additional things on to it. So now we're just talking about the membership and a meeting date.
All right, so, so the motion was to have Councilmembers Kurtz, Kennedy, and Mayor Protem Cargill on this committee that would meet every other Friday. That's this, that's the motion, and we had the second, right? I think by Councilmember Kurtz. All right, those. Oh, sorry. I've been writing furiously. But so that was Councilmember Spencer. Okay, um, so discussion, Councilmember Kennedy.
Discussion. I'm in favor of the motion with the change of allow the committee to determine what day they want to meet. Let them pick their schedule, because it may be that they can do it on a Thursday some week, maybe Friday the next, but let's don't put it in the ordinance.
So can I amend the motion to just say every other week?
No, but Mike can. Okay. Mike can make a motion to.
Make a motion to amend it, to eliminate meeting on every Friday.
We have a motion in a second for an amendment to remove the every other Friday requirement, correct? All right, any discussion on the amendment piece? Okay, not hearing any. Those in favor of removing the every other Friday meeting um language, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, motion passes seven zero. So we're back to the original motion to appoint um Councilmembers Kurtz, Kennedy, and Mayor Protem Cargill to serve on this review committee with um dates to be determined. Okay, so any further discussion on that? Not hearing any. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, motion passes seven zero. Okay, we have a committee. And I, we will leave it to you guys to keep us informed of what those dates are and whatnot. Um, and what my participation may be if you would like it.
Yeah, I'll see, I'll see you too.
Okay, all right. And we are done with that one. So that being said, make a note here, we are up to general business consent agenda. Do we have a motion for A and C?
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve general business consent agenda items uh ten A and ten C.
Second from anybody?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Spencer. Since this is consent agenda, there will be no discussion. So those in favor of approving consent agenda items A and C, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes seven zero. All right, we are up to general business action items. So first up, we have um Parks and Arts student appointment. So we'll look for a motion and then we will talk to Audrey.
I'll make a motion, Mayor, to approve general business uh action item eleven A, the nomination for Audrey White to fill the open student commissioner position on the Parks and Arts Commission.
Okay, how many, okay. Who, who? Okay, we haven't heard from Councilmember Van Orman yet. So second by Councilmember Van Orman. All right, so Audrey, would you like to join us at the podium? So we uh had, so Nancy Hill and Jen and I had a chance to interview Audrey a couple of weeks ago now. Um, really impressive young lady. She, you're going into your junior year, correct? Um, and if you don't mind, kind of tell us what you told us about um what, how you want, want to be involved with Parks and Arts. Why, what you plan to do with it? So, because I mean, I was just blown away. So I'd like these guys to hear it from you.
Okay, um, so I'm Audrey White. I am going in my junior year at Bridgeline High School. I will be attending Running Start, however. But um I mainly want to join um as the student representative because I have found that art has helped me a lot this year in very different ways. Arts and just different programs that I participated this year in school, including my uh marching band and other performing arts programs. And I um, I've just been changed so much, and I want to be able to possibly spread the word uh more about what's going on in here to fellow students and fellow people within our school district to be able to um provide others the same opportunities that I've gotten this year through my art teachers and a lot of what you guys do as well.
Right, because they may have any questions. I think Audrey's going to be a a great addition. Plus, we have her for two years. Um, our last commissioner would only have one year until she graduated. So looking forward to great things. Any questions? All right, not hearing any. Then um all those in favor of confirming uh my nomination for Audrey White to fill the open student commissioner position on Parks and Arts, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, motion passes seven zero. Welcome to the team, and you will be hearing from Nancy on the schedule.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Hey, I'm Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
We skipped vouchers.
No, it's on eleven C.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Okay, eleven B.
Uh, Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the general business item eleven B. Um, the Kroger opioid settlement and authorize the mayor to sign the participation form.
Sean.
Second.
Oh, we have, sorry, we have seconds. I have something we're done. Anything you want to share with us on this? We get like point zero zero three nine.
I I think Kyle let everybody know that the the large sum of money that's coming to the city um under this settlement. What was it, ninety-two hundred dollars? Ninety-two hundred over eleven or twelve. Eleven years. So uh, other than that, that's just similar to all the other ones that have come before the council.
All right, does anybody have any questions?
Uh, just a statement, I'm pleased that we didn't have to have a workshop on this one.
Councilmember Spencer.
Yeah, I, you know, as each of these keep coming forward, I, you know, I pause to look at what, what's happening. The the government's essentially suing private organizations or public organizations. And and I wonder, um, I I haven't found that any of these organizations have necessarily admitted any sort of guilt. Um, and and it's simply a settlement. Um, so uh I I am not going to vote in favor of this.
All right, any other comments or questions? Not hearing any. All of those in favor of approving, joining the Kroger opioid settlement and authorizing the mayor to sign the participation form, please say aye.
Aye.
All right.
All right, motion passes six to one with what?
Yeah.
Okay, I, you said I, uh, motion passes six to one with Councilmember Spencer dissenting.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve general business action item eleven C, the July sixteenth, twenty twenty-four vouchers.
We have a second?
Second.
All right, now we open to questions. Councilmember Ball.
Yeah, it's just one question. Um, Kylie, I guess you all know this. Oh, zero zero one, five, nine, four, seven, six, six, four, oh, one. Um, and heavy-duty outdoor picnic table that's costing us over six thousand.
Multiple. Those are the ones that are on that, right?
Six of them.
Yeah. Oh, there's six of them.
Yeah.
And those are for the trailhead deck?
Uh, temporarily for the trailhead deck, and then they'll be repurposed once we get.
Restaurant.
A restaurant, yeah.
Oh, okay. I thought this was one gigantic picnic table, and I just did not understand it. So, okay.
Quite all right. Okay, and 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 just a note, I mean, obviously, these are great to discuss here as well. But um if you guys do have voucher questions, if you want to send them to Kyle ahead of the meeting, and then Kyle will respond. And then also copy the rest of the council. So in case everybody, somebody else is asking the same question, so um feel free to do that. Um, so, all right, so we are up to count. Oh, we have to go ahead.
Yeah, I I want to thank Councilball for asking that to be changed, because I, if not, I had a question also. Uh, but first of all, I want to address what the mayor just said, is that that's very true. If we have questions, we can direct it to Kyle. Kyle is very good at getting back to us. But a lot of times, majority of the times, I ask questions because I've had citizens ask me that question on it. So what happens is this, if I ask this question, I'm going to ask right now to Kyle, Kyle will give me a response, and I'll be satisfied with that response. But the public will not hear that. So the benefit of bringing it up in the meeting is so the public can hear that. The question I had, it only for verification, as I look at entry item three, eight, four, zero, having to do with Spokane County Jail. I started to ask this question last time on it, uh, July two thousand twenty-four housing, ten thousand two hundred and sixty-three dollars. On it, is that a monthly thing that we're dealing with? That's the number we deal with?
Yes.
Okay, so that's a hundred and some thousand dollars a year. And then the second one, twenty-one thousand three hundred and twenty-seven contract billing for dispatch services.
Monthly.
That is a monthly on it. So back on the question, the ten thousand two hundred and sixty-three, that's a flat amount regardless if we're utilizing sending any customers their way.
Yeah, they they will send us usually in November or December. Uh, stats from the previous year, and it's a per capita.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Good questions. All right, all right. So if there are no quite more questions on vouchers, I'll take the vote for those in favor of approving the vouchers um in the amount of, let me get back here. Where was it? There you go, six hundred fifteen thousand eight hundred four dollars and fifty-four cents. Please say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, motion passes seven zero. All right, we are up to council comments. Do we have any uh further council comments? And of course, we will get to workshop stuff in a little bit. Anything additional? All right, not hearing any. We have no public hearings or appeals. We do have a resolution in front of us, so I will turn it over to Kyle to read it, and then we will have a motion.
Uh, Mayor and Council before us tonight is resolution number twenty-four dash two six three. Resolution of the City of Liberty Lake, Washington, approving the final plat of Hawkstone fourth edition located in portions of the northeast corner of section eleven. Township twenty-five N, range forty-five EWN, Liberty Lake, Washington, file P dash zero six dash zero 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 two C.
Sure, you're finished? All right, so um do we have a motion to move, to move resolution twenty-four dash two sixty-three?
So moved.
All right, we have a motion, and do we have a second? Second by Councilmember Dunn. All right, uh, any discussion or questions for Lisa on this one? Councilmember Van Orman.
I do. I see that there's a lot of open plats, but are there, are those to be made into pocket parks? Are they just for drainage? Or are any large parks anticipated in that area? Lisa's here. There are several tracks for open space in Swales. Um, uh, there are no parks proposed. Appreciate that this is, this preliminary plat was approved back in two thousand and eight. And it is entitled. So they are reflecting the plat that was approved. There are, this is much denser than anything we would have approved under our current code. It is, there are things that we would not have done. Um, it's nightmarish from an addressing standpoint because of all the alleys that serve this development. This is not anything that would be approved today, but the owner has entitlement.
Um, Councilmember Dunn and Councilmember Ball.
Thank you, Lisa. And that was the nature of my question also is that, for the best of our knowledge right now, this is um allowable uh per the codes, uh specific area plans specifically, which has been previously approved. But to use your words, this would never be allowed in the codes that we have today.
It is correct.
Thanks.
All right, Councilmember Ball.
So who I'm, I'd like, who's developing this? Who's?
So you get closer to your mic, Wendy. Just remember, you got to get closer to your mic.
Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, yeah, who's, who's the developer on this? So the developer originally was Todd Prescott, and um he sold the project to Lennar. Lennar is now the developer on it. They own this. They have brought it to fruition. They've actually decreased the density in this phase um from what had been approved. So, yeah, so it's um, uh, there's, there was not, there were, it just is what it is. And and this is, and and they did it for market reasons because they felt like what they, what they had built in the third phase, the the, the uh third edition was not as marketable as more single-family homes. So they're doing more detached, single-family homes. They actually were, uh, it was actually plotted to have even more townhomes.
So this will all be townhomes then, pretty much, or?
No, it's, it's a mixture of townhomes and single-family homes, detached, single-family homes. Um, uh, there are also some, a couple of commercial lots that are still owned by Mr. Prescott that are, that sit up at the top of the stone hill, as it were. And there's also several lots that were intended for multifamily that um Mr. Prescott also still owns.
Okay, yeah, I rode my bike through this the other day too, looking at this. I thought, ooh, tight.
Councilmember Van Orman.
If memory serves me right, um, Todd Prescott was with Whitewater, and this was supposed to be workforce housing.
Wendy, can you get closer to your mic, please?
So this development was with Todd Prescott, which was with Whitewater Housing. And it originally was supposed to be for workforce housing. That's probably why it was a little bit denser.
And again, that may be, there's not really any sort of record of that in the um in the uh notice of decision and conditions of approval. So that may have been the justification, but that's not really reflected in the SAP or the plat approval or anything. So uh, there's nothing, no, we can't hold anybody's feet to the fire on that.
Right. One more question?
They were originally supposed to put uh like, um, New York City has the park. What did they call it? The Central Park? Is there any parks in that area? There, they actually have some green space that um, they kind of small green space. They've got one larger area that right now has some fencing around it that is intended to be more of an open space. But there also were no conditions of approval related to what the improvements had to be for that open space. So basically, all it is is grass and some landscaping. They they are held to today's landscaping standards. They are held to today's street standards, um, not necessarily the width, but in terms of the construction of them.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Any other questions for Lisa? All right, so before we go to a vote, um, since this is a resolution, we do um provide a a quick chance for the public to comment on this resolution. So if there's anybody in chambers um who'd like to make a comment on this resolution only, please let us know. If there's anybody online who'd like to comment on the resolution only, please send a note to our meeting host in chat. I'm going to give you just a moment to do that. It doesn't look like there's anybody here in chambers. Is there anybody online? Okay, so it just sounds like we have no citizen comment on the resolution, so I will go ahead to a vote. All those in favor of approving resolution twenty-four dash two six three, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I couldn't tell you were in between. You were in between. I couldn't tell if that was a yes or no.
In between, but I don't believe that we really can do anything.
So yes or no?
So it would be a yes.
Okay, so was that seven zero? Okay, just want to make sure. All right, motion passes seven zero. We have no ordinances, no emergency ordinances. So upcoming agenda items, you've got your updated spreadsheet in front of you. Um, today is the sixteenth. We talked about that. Um, Lisa, are we still on on track for um Stormwater Master Plan and Development Code for August sixth?
She blew out of here, but I believe we are, yes.
Okay, thanks. I did, I didn't look up to see.
Yeah, and that's, that is purely subject to ecology's review.
Okay, thank you. So that sounds like uh full up on workshops for the sixteenth. Um, we've got the town hall um tentatively planned with regards to the transparency ordinance on September tenth. Um, then we've got some others that um have TBD dates on them. Is there anything on here that is urgent, urgent that we want to, because let's go, at least go to the next second meeting in August. I don't have that date in front of me. Or something, if ecology does not get back to us, that we want to move to the, to the sixth, okay, sixth to the twentieth. Um, Councilmember Kennedy.
Oh, thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Uh, yeah, a couple of these things I've seen have been on here for some time, code of ethics, uh, commission appointment process, things of that sort there. Is there, at what point are those going to be put on the agenda?
Or kind of, if there's a name next to it, I could, I've been kind of deferring to the person who brought it up.
Right.
So I guess fork.
On the, on the um commission appointment process, we're still talking about it and trying to get some stuff behind the scenes.
When you say we're still, who is still?
I'm, I'm trying to get staff support for it. We talked about uh having um I'm, I'm trying to get staff support for it. We talked about, uh, having, um, gosh, it's been like four months since we discussed this, but we were talking about getting some staff support either from Kelsey or I can't remember who it was. But it's not a urgent situation, so that's why I haven't pushed it as of right now.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, um, uh, Mayor. Yes, ma'am.
Um, what's, what's the location for this town hall? Do we know yet?
It's trailhead.
Oh, it is? Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah, community engagements heavily involved at that.
Okay, and that's on the tenth of September, okay.
All right, and we, uh, Councilmember Van Orman had her hand up.
Yes, we had talked about, uh, during the Give Crime a Night Out. Were we still planning on doing over at Pavilion Park?
Um, we were, we've been, we had been talking about doing some, a meeting, um, outside, literally. Uh, I know there's some logistics with regards to meeting, um, recordings and such. So, uh, Mark, if you and I, let's put that on our discussion list with, uh, staff for tomorrow morning during the director's meeting. Well, I know we've got a different time for that because.
Tomorrow afternoon, yeah.
Okay, yeah. Um, so I'm making a note of that. Let me just a second. Okay, and I saw another hand, um, Mayor Protem.
Um, I have a couple of different items here.
Yeah.
Uh, one, Mark, when we bring back the rules of procedure, can, um, can you address whether we need to update eight point two, talking about whether, uh, citizens can speak on behalf of other citizens? I know we talked, we addressed that briefly in the last session. Um, because we had that issue come up a couple of times in the past year where people were here speaking on behalf of another citizen, which may well be good, but on the other hand, we don't know for sure that that citizen has given them the okay. So I'm just wondering if, if there's.
I'll add that to my potential red lines, even before we leave here tonight. Um, so the one we do bring everything back. Um, hopefully, um, if so, if ecology doesn't come back on the sixth, um, then we maybe we can move the next discussion on the rules of procedure to there.
So I'd also offer that, yes, we will do that, make some red line adjustments. Uh, the entire citizen comment uh, process is on the agenda for the Transparency Act.
Oh, okay.
So I would recommend waiting until after that discussion happens to make any final changes, but yes, we can include some adjusted language in the red line.
Great. Um, my second question was whether we need to have a discussion. Um, given the Supreme Court decision and Grant's pass, and I know you had emailed uh, saying that we basically built our ordinance to withstand that regardless. But I'm wondering if the council needs to have a more public discussion about whether we need to revisit that now, tighten up some of the language now that the Supreme Court has given us the authority to do so, or, or maybe just leave it alone. Um, so I'm not sure if we can add that for a workshop discussion sometime over the next few months. Um, carbon fuel, I believe, was the, a discussion about whether this council wanted to make a, um, and correct me if I'm wrong, um, wanted to make a, its position known on the initiatives. Is that right? And that was one of the initiatives?
Not to my knowledge.
What was the carbon fuel that won then?
I don't remember. We don't have a name on it.
I don't know.
Because we were, we were discussing, I think Councilmember Spencer brought it up, about whether, um, whether the council was going to take any position. And I know we had mixed feelings about that on any of the initiatives.
I remember that too, Mayor Protem, and I, I think we sort of left it am- ambiguous in the sense that I think there were a few people who didn't think the council should be taking positions and then some that did. And I, I just think it just sort of died there, but I, I recall the same conversation.
But I'm wondering if that was what carbon fuel was.
Could be.
Okay.
So it sounds right, yeah.
Yeah, so if we can't remember who brought it up, take it off. And we'll, we'll have to be better about, uh, getting names on here, so.
Okay, yeah, that's.
Yeah, there's a couple of other things that we can wrap into, again, um, as we're going through the council rules of procedure, presentation link and all that stuff. Um, who was first?
Uh, go ahead, Jake.
Okay.
Councilmember Spencer.
Yeah, I, I'd like to, uh, entertain a discussion uh, regarding perhaps putting together an ordinance committing ourselves not to using debt for capital facility projects as a city. On a go-forward basis.
I'm sorry, using what?
Uh, committing ourselves as a council to not using debt to fund capital facility projects in the future.
Interesting. Okay, um, any, anybody opposed to that? And then I'm going to go to Councilmember Kurtz. And we can certainly put a workshop on it. It's, it's in, well, in, really, you know, it's in the financial policies. It's really probably where that would reside, right?
Yes, that's correct, yeah.
So, it would necessarily be a resolution or something, well, or a resolution, you know, stating that from the council. We, we can put a workshop on for that. Council, go ahead.
Can I just ask a quick question to Sean? Is there anything that would prevent us from passing an ordinance to that effect?
As long as it doesn't.
I have some reservations. I, I, I don't, now's not time to get into it. I want to look into it further. My concern is that there are statutory allowances provided to councils. Um, and passing an ordinance that would be in conflict with a, with a statute would be prohibited. So, um, that's my initial concern thinking about it. So there, there's be some more review necessary, you know, depending on how far the council wants to take it.
All right, uh, Councilmember Kurtz.
As we're talking about the rules of procedure, um, and agenda items that are sort of like lingering out there, I wonder if somewhere, whether it's in that or something else, we can talk about how long we should let things linger without resolution. Um, how long they stay here, what are, if we can come up with a little bit more of a plan and I, I would, I would like to talk about that at some point soon because I think we let things linger and I think we could, uh, move some things along.
Okay. Sounds good. We'll wrap that into our discussion on rules. Uh, Councilmember Kennedy.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. I'd, I'd like to add one item here. Uh, in light of the recent, um, my gosh, assassination attempt on a public official. I would like to put on here to have somebody from the police department to come in and give us a tutorial of this group and also the benefit of the citizens who show up at this meeting, uh, how to handle ourselves in the event that somebody comes into this facility. And how do we exit from here? I know that by law, we're supposed to keep these doors unlocked during that period of time, but but I know myself, there's never a time I come to this meeting where I am not conscientious who's here and also how the hell do I get out of here in the event of emergency?
Best door, man, you got, you got the best exit. You, you went, Mark.
I'm sitting by this door. But I would like to see, uh, probably is, uh, sometime in your future, like next meeting, have somebody from the police department give us a tutorial on that.
Okay, we can, we can talk about that and during the director's meeting tomorrow as well. Maybe it could be that we do a special, special little training after a regular meeting or something. We'll figure that out. Exit strategy, how's that?
Yeah, there we go.
Okay, all right. Anybody else on, on future agenda items? All right, not hearing any. Um, we do have one more opportunity for citizen comments. I know we have, um, Tom Salberg on the line to, um, make a comment, um, remotely. And so again, if there's anybody here in the chambers, which it doesn't look like it, who'd like to make a citizen comment, um, please let, fill out the yellow half sheet on the table there and get it to Kyle. But in the meantime, we will call on Tom Salberg if we can get him on here. I see.
Hey, can you hear me?
We can. Go ahead.
Okay, Tom Salberg, Liberty Lake citizen. Uh, first of all, I'd like to say thank you to all the city crews. Uh, my brothers and sisters on the Liberty Lake Police Department who are up often before dawn, um, working around Liberty Lake to make it a beautiful place and a safe place. Um, for the conversation we had earlier about thanking our, our staff, I really appreciate them. As you know, I'm up early and often, uh, I get to wave or have a conversation with them. Secondly, uh, this will probably be my last attempt to fight for and resuscitate Community Engagement Commission from being relegated to the role of cleaning up after what I've observed to be preventable miscues. The role they were created for was to, and I quote from the ordinance, serve in an advisory capacity to the mayor and city council. To act as a citizen engagement and advisory body to provide guidance, direction, and input to the mayor and city council. Which includes to study and submit recommendations regarding the best methods to actively and sustainably engage residents in the co-production in the planning and implementation of upcoming projects, capital improvements, community initiatives, and other matters as directed by the mayor and city council. As a result, instead of following our organizational chart that establishes citizen participation as being on the same level as the mayor and city council, their role has been assert. Also, as a result, this change in the direction and duties has put the Community Engagement Commission in violation of the ordinance, which establishes and spells out its visions, its roles, and its responsibilities. My question to you, the elected leaders of Liberty Lake, is simply, why has this happened? And what are you going to do to remedy this so that citizens who live here and have volunteered are involved in the planning and implementation of all engagement on that commission? If you as leaders agree with what has happened, please change the ordinance. I for one would never have applied to the Community Engagement Commission under these circumstances. In my experience, and I've been on almost every commission here, no other commission of citizen volunteers has been so mismanaged. Citizen-led, staff-assisted commissions are and should be the hallmark of how city leadership interacts with their citizens. I trust and hope you will change the direction and leadership of this Community Engagement Commission back to its original and expressed intent and purpose and follow the clear guidelines of ordinance number two seventy-seven. The Community Engagement Commission has a meeting tomorrow night. And it could be a critical meeting. If you're not going to the soiree, which I guess I won't be going, uh, you might want to attend that meeting and see what's happening and see if you have some input into it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do we have anybody else online? It does not look like it. Okay, all right, we now ha- um, have a scheduled executive session per RCW forty-two dot thirty dot one ten one I regarding potential litigation. Um, Sean, how about how much time you think we need?
Ten minutes.
Okay, so we, we will look to, um, come back in, into chambers at nine PM. We will adjourn at that time. There will be no action taken during executive session or after. Now nine o'clock, we just got back from executive session. As I mentioned, there were no decisions made and there's no further action um, or items in front of the council, so we will go ahead and adjourn. Have a great night, everybody.